Good evening, I have six o'clock and I would like to welcome everyone to the July thirteenth meeting of the New Bern Board of Aldermen at this time. The prayer tonight will be given by Alderman Sabrina Bingle.
Good evening Mayor. Tonight I would like to ask Zev Huff, who is the Executive Director of Religious Community Services, to bring our prayer. Thank you so much for being here tonight, Zev.
It's my pleasure. Would you all bow with me in prayer? Dear wise and loving Father, we thank you on behalf of all gathered here today. Thank you for the many and abundant blessings that you give us every day. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health that we need to fulfill the callings upon each of us. Thank you for the ability to be involved in the useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thank you for this gathering tonight. Tonight, we ask for your blessing. We ask for your blessing upon those you've called to lead us, that you give them wisdom to govern amid conflict, a sense of welfare in the true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and rightness, confidence in what is good and fitting, and the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement. We pray for personal peace in the lives of those who share this community with us. We pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give us an assurance of what would please you and benefit those who live and work in our community. We pray it all in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Would you all may the pledge of allegiance and flag of our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which the saints, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can I first, if you follow the roll?
Alderman Bingle.
Here.
Alderman Harris. Alderman Astor. Mayor Outlaw.
Here.
Alderman Kinsey.
Here.
Alderman Best.
Present.
Alderman Odom.
Here.
At this time, we're going to go to item number three. Part of item number three is I would be remiss if I didn't notice with some comments before I turn it over to Alderman Bingle. In 1968, I arrived in New Bern with my mother and father and my three siblings, and I really didn't know much about the city of New Bern. Having moved from Raleigh to Smithfield to Lawrence to Fayetteville to New Bern, I just assumed from my culture of moving a lot that I would probably wind up four or five other places before I got to this age. So that was in 1968. First person I met in New Bern was Etheridge Ricks, who was the mayor, and he comforted me by how much I would like and learn to love this city. When I went to New Bern High School, knew nobody on campus. Actually, I did know one person, my brother, who was a year old. But I certainly started to learn a few things about New Bern High School. And one thing that I quickly found to be true about the high school, New Bern High School, was the leadership. And there was a gentleman there, a fellow student, class seventy-two, by the name of Michael Morgan. And it was no surprise to any of us, not class of seventy-two members that live in New Bern, or when I see my classmates throughout North Carolina. If you said that Michael Morgan is on the Supreme Court now, nobody would be shocked by that. It was meant to be because of the leadership that Michael, every day of the week manifested in what he did. Michael, you were a drum major, I believe, were you not? And I think if you ever had an opportunity to see Michael lead the musical procession of any parade or anything, you would know what I was talking about. I don't know if any of that's on video or not. There was another leader that a year or two later, that I found very important to New Bern, and that was a person by the name of Leander Morgan, who came out to New Bern Senior High School on a disappointing historical moment in the history of this city. And again, Leander Morgan's leadership was not, was not, it was not a series of leadership resume building things like Michael's. It was an instantaneous response to a lot of adults that were acting more childish than a lot of children at the high school. And Leander Morgan, who at that time was a funeral director and on whatever Rivers Morgan, showed a unique leadership and a calming of this city and a reasonableness and a respectfulness to everybody involved, that what could have been a very, very serious situation for New Bern, became a civil moment that we all had a chance to refresh and rethink that event. So, tonight is very historical. My father, J.C. Outlaw, was city manager in New Bern from 1968 to 81. And my dad, so many times told me, which again, you know, who would know in 2021 that I would be the mayor, but he told me on so many occasions of the leadership that Mayor Leander Morgan and future Mayor, Mayor Bingle, would give to our city. And so, you know, my father had an opportunity to serve as the manager for your dad as an Alderman, and then Mayor, and then Ella Bingle was the Alderman. And Ella's historical thing, which will come out in a few minutes, I mean, a lot of your recreational amenities and the recreational programs in New Bern, Ella hit the ground and immediately started working on improving the recreational opportunities. And so, again, this is a historic night. So at this time, I want to turn this over to the historian of City Hall, the Alderman for the First Ward, former Mayor Perkson Sabrina Bingle, to do this.
Thank you Mayor Outlaw, I appreciate it. And thank you all for being here tonight. So, Mayor Outlaw, my fellow Alderman, the Morgan and Bingle families, our city staff and citizens of New Bern, welcome to our newly renovated courtroom and second floor offices. Since March 23rd of this year, the Public Works Department, led by Matt Montane and Graham Price, worked with hardworking, and I mean hardworking, and dedicated staff members and contractors to repair years of decay and then damage that was caused by Hurricane Florence. Intruding water had damaged the walls and molding, and a project which we thought would take a month ended up taking three months. What you see tonight is the result of those efforts. City Hall is an unmistakable landmark in the city of New Bern. Located at the corner of Craven and Pollock Street, since 1895, residents and visitors often stop to admire the intricate and beautiful architectural details of this building. At nighttime, you can't miss the brightly lit clock face, which serves as a beacon along the New Bern cityscape. Long admired as a symbol of progress and possibility, this building holds unique history for New Bern. Described by architect expert Peter Sandback as a mixture of the Romanesque revival and high Victorian Gothic styles, it was built, minus the clock tower, as a federal building serving as a post office, custom house, and courthouse. The tower and iconic four-faced Seth Thomas clock you see in this picture was finally added in 1911 after numerous complaints from citizens and led by a request from Congressman Charles Thomas of New Bern. From 1888 until 1935, City Hall was located on Craven Street, across from what is now Mitchell Hardware. The city purchased this building, the custom house courthouse, from the US government when the US government moved its offices to the newly built federal courthouse on Middle Street in 1935. Once the city moved in, they took down a pair of black iron bears from old City Hall, a gift from Bern, Switzerland, and reinstalled them over the entryway. City Hall's interior, which mostly remains intact, shows a wealth of woodwork from three stories of hardwood banisters that we all struggled to get up tonight, and stairs to the trim and mantles in several old offices, including the mayor's office, which is now located on this floor. Many of the light fixtures you see in here and on this floor were installed in 1911 and are still in use today, as are many pieces of furniture that you see in the courtroom and the mayor and Alderman's office. And we tried to use all of these pieces in looking at them. What I'm going to do now is just really talk about the efforts of our staff and those people that worked really hard. I want to thank Graham Price again. He, and I'm going to scroll pretty quickly, he did a lot of picture-taking to show what we were doing. As you can see, the pictures in the back of the building were originally on the side wall. They are flags that were gifted to us from Switzerland. You can see the rot in the wood that they found that had to be replaced. Every one of these light fixtures was taken apart, was polished, and was put back. This is a view looking down of what it looked like prior to the renovation. They had a table in the middle, the carpeting, and this was the start of the process. You could see as the benches were taken out and we started to remove everything so we could work the plaster and we could work. This is an interesting picture. When I went up into the attic with the staff, we found rows of benches that were upstairs. So, we wanted to add more rows down here, and so, some of them were so badly damaged, what we were able to salvage was the two front benches in the front row. And we used parts from the other benches to rebuild these and put them back together. So we were really glad that we found them. I don't know how long they'd been up in the attic. Again, these are our city staff people who have, you know, really lovingly, and I'm going to say lovingly, worked to restore. All the woodwork has been refinished and revarnished. The light fixtures, moving the furniture around. They love this building like we love this building. And I'm so appreciative of the amazing staff that this city has. You can see here, from the water intruding, we had to pull the wainscoting away and repair that. So again, this building had suffered, you know, some not good maintenance for many years. Here's pictures of them restoring. Like I said, they've pulled every piece of brass out. They took it out, they polished it, they varnished it, and put it back together again. And this was all done in-house by our staff. Shows the caliber of people that we have working for us, that I know everybody sitting here tonight is proud of the people that we employ. Again, these are pictures of the damage that we saw in this building and that had to be repaired. And it took the three months, it took every bit of the three months, and I, again, wanted to let you all see. As we move forward in the years ahead, we still have more repairs that we need to do. The picture you see here in front of you is the stairs leading up to the third wall, and unfortunately, it's starting to come from the wall. So that's going to have to be repaired so that we can use that third floor and make sure it's safe for people to get up and down it. And we hope in the next year that we'll be able to access some funds and do some other things so this building can continue to get the attention that it needs. The moldings were refinished, new paint, new carpet, new technology. And so what you're seeing, what my fellow Aldermen are seeing in front of you now, is we can look at a screen in front of us instead of having to look one side or the other to see presentations and PowerPoints. We have also brought the mayor's office upstairs, which is the first room when you get to the top of the stairs, and the room next to it has now been made into an Alderman suite. And I'm really happy and excited about that. It gives the Alderman opportunity to have a place to meet with citizens when they come in. Also too, I hope that you will visit it tonight before you leave and look in there because we have pictures of some passports. But we also have pictures of two very important women that I'd like to call attention to. And one was Kathleen Oringer, who was the first woman Alderman to serve the city of New Bern in the sixties. And again, this was a time when women were supposed to stay home and raise children and not be in City Hall. And she was a trailblazer, and she was our very first woman Alderman, so we pay tribute to her. Her portrait is there with her dates of service and her name. Next to her is our first black woman Alderman, who was Barbara Lee. And she served for twenty-plus years, you know, faithfully to this city, and again, was a trailblazer. When others said it couldn't be done, you know, she followed in the footsteps of Leander Morgan, who was the first black Alderman, but she was the first black woman Alderman. And she laid the groundwork, as did Kathleen Oringer, for myself, Alderman Harris, and Alderman Best, to be able to sit up here before you tonight. So, this is what we have been doing for the past three months. I want to, again, give praise and thanks to our city staff and the contractors that worked with us in pulling all this together and making this a place that is worthy of the citizens of the city of New Bern. Because this is your house. This is your building. This belongs to the citizens, doesn't belong to any one of us, but it belongs to the citizens. And I wanted to have something that all of us could be proud of, that visitors and citizens alike could come in and visit. So without further ado, I'd like to, let's see, move ahead to the portion of the program where we are going to talk about the portraits that you see hanging behind me. Let me see if I can get to that really quickly. They took over three hundred pictures. I told them to document everything. They really did a great job in documenting everything that we did. Okay. Can you enlarge that from there? This building, this courtroom, this city would not have meaning if it were not for the leaders and the staff that have served here. Tonight, we as a city honor two trailblazers who paved the way for others to follow that may not have had the opportunity, had it not been for Leander Morgan Senior and Ella Bingle. They both took the step to hold the office others said they could not or should not hold. Their desire to serve was heart-driven for a city and people they loved and who only wanted a better way for those who lived and worked here. On May 15th, 2019, the North Carolina Supreme Court held a historic session here in this courtroom. In honor of Justice Michael Morgan, the portrait of his father that was given to the city was hung behind a seat as a fitting and meaningful tribute. At the May 28th, 2019 Board of Aldermen meeting, it was unanimously voted that the portraits of both Mayor Morgan, the first African-American mayor, and the portrait of Mayor Ella Bingle would be hung in the courtroom celebrating these two firsts for the city of New Bern. This evening, on behalf of the mayor and Board of Aldermen, we are honored to welcome the Morgan and Bingle families to this dedication. Our city continues to benefit because of the important first steps that mayors Morgan and Bingle took. And we officially dedicate these portraits tonight as part of our history. Mayor Morgan was a native of Washington DC. He received his secondary education in the District of Columbia Public Schools and later matriculated at Howard University, Minor's Teacher College, and received a Master of Science degree from George Washington University in Washington DC. He was employed in the DC school system as a teacher prior to his entrance into the United States Army. He was honorably discharged and returned to teaching. In 1962, he and his family moved to New Bern, where Mayor Morgan taught in the New Bern city school system and eventually became a teacher principal. After a few years, he joined the faculty of Craven Community College and was chairman of the Human Service Division. Mayor Morgan became a funeral director in 63 and in 68 attended McAllister American Academy for his formal funeral service training in New York City. In 1969, he became a licensed embalmer in the state of North Carolina. In 1971, he was historically elected to the city of New Bern's Board of Aldermen, becoming the first black to serve in such a capacity. He further made history when in 1977, he was elected as mayor. The first and only black to lead New Bern in its municipal affairs, Mayor Morgan serviced in the city of New Bern and elected office included three terms as its mayor and two terms as its mayor pro tempore. He received numerous awards, namely the North Carolina Conference of Black Mayors Award, the George Henry White Award, Omega Psi Phi Service Award, Alpha Phi Alpha Community Service Award, Alpha Kappa Alpha Distinguished Service Award, and the Alpha Kappa Alpha Distinguished Service Award for the Mid-Atlantic Region. I would now like to introduce Justice Michael Morgan to speak on behalf of his family. Judge Morgan.
Alderman Bingle, thank you so much for the tribute as well as for this recognition. This is, Mr. Mayor and Board, a gorgeous, magnificent facility. And I congratulate all of you for your foresight and your wisdom in investing in this great edifice that represents our great city. Mr. Mayor, thank you as well for your gracious words as I sat there and reminisced on how you and I were in the class of 1972 together. I remember fondly our time together. I remember your father very fondly as well and his great service to this wonderful city of New Bern. And I thank you for your remembrances of that fateful day in January of 1971, a little over fifty years ago, when it was a dark day in New Bern and my father had a chance to step forward and help to heal this city at a time when healing was necessary. So thank you for your kind words. This is a wonderful occasion, and I'm so grateful to be here. It's always wonderful to be in my hometown of New Bern. Wherever I go, and I've got a chance to travel this state quite a bit as a member of the Supreme Court of our great state. Always carry New Bern with me and always brag about New Bern and unapologetically so. And being here tonight just reminds me of why I continue to do that. I represent my family, and a number of us are here today in person. Some of us are unable to be here, but we are watching through the live stream. But I do want to mention that my mother, Barbara Morgan, who just turned eighty-six years old two days ago, is watching. She sends her fine remarks and hellos to all of you, and she wants all of you to know that this is a proud occasion for her this evening. As I think about what all of this represents, I want you to understand that Lee Morgan loved New Bern. He obviously loved New Bern because he relocated his family here from his hometown of Washington DC in order to raise his young family in this great city, the hometown of my mother, his wife, Barbara Morgan. He also loved serving people. And in that respect, it's no surprise at all that he found a way to combine the two loves, the love for New Bern and the love for serving people, and served the people of this great city. This city is a great one, and as I thank all of you for this recognition for our father, our grandfather, our husband. Once upon a time, it would have been fashionable to thank the city fathers for this. But there is someone who is also being honored tonight in the person of Ella Bingle, who saw fit to also make sure that there was a pioneering spirit in the recognition of the diversity that my father promoted, that she also promoted. And it is a great pleasure to share this opportunity tonight as I congratulate and thank the Bingle family as well on this auspicious occasion of the remembrance and salute to Mayor Bingle. In looking at my father, and I'll try to be brief, because I've been instructed to do so, it's hard to not reflect on the fact that when he combined his love of the city as well as his love of the people of this city, that I remember being barely a teenager and hearing him talk about the need to make sure that all of the streets of New Bern were curved and guttered. I didn't know what that phrase meant, but I came to understand that what it meant was that all of the streets of New Bern needed to be paved in all of the neighborhoods of this great city. Because no matter where one lived in this growing city, there was a need to make sure that there was not standing water that caused peril and inconvenience, no matter where one might live, where the rains would come and literally have standing water in them for days and even weeks afterwards. He had a vision to make sure that New Bern recognized all of its potential, not only for itself as a municipality, but also for all of its citizens, to make sure that everyone and everything could reach its fullest potential and to fulfill its destiny. I would hear him talk about the fact that there was a need for equal economic opportunities and equal educational opportunities and equal opportunities across the board for everyone when it came to employment. Because again, in terms of talking about the diversity that this great city enjoyed through Mayor Bingle and through my father, Mayor Morgan, that there was an understanding that there was an interrelationship. If the people prospered, then New Bern would prosper. And if New Bern prospered, then the people would prosper. That was what his vision was for New Bern. That's what his vision was for its citizens. And that's what he worked hard and sacrificed much to make sure that he contributed all that he could, so that that vision that he had would have his footprint and his imprint all over it, to the extent that he could allow it to occur. He loved this city. He loved its people. So I thank you, Mr. Mayor and Board of Aldermen, on behalf of my family and behalf of the citizens, for making sure that there is a place for my father as the decades go by and as this city continues to fulfill its destiny, to celebrate diversity as Mayor Bingle brought forth and as Mayor Morgan brought forth and as all of us continue to bring forth. There's a strength in New Bern. There's a heritage in New Bern. There's a joy in New Bern. Lee Morgan loved New Bern, and Lee Morgan loved its people. Thank you for allowing his portrait to occupy a prominent place in these hall and halls. And as he loved New Bern and as he loved his people, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Board, for showing him love on this treasured and meaningful occasion. Thank you.
Thank you, Justice. Bella Bingle was born in Trenton, North Carolina, and moved to New Bern when she was three years old. She married the love of her life, Ari Buddy Bingle Senior, excuse me, Junior, when she was fifteen years old, and became a wife and a mother to five children. She was employed with Ari Bingle Sheet Metal Company as the bookkeeper for forty years. Her life was a life dedicated to serving her Lord and Savior and to others in her community. She never missed an opportunity to share the gospel of our Lord with those who would meet and was described by others as an unashamed witness. She dedicated her life to Christ at an early age and faithfully attended church all her life. She did God's work as a Sunday school teacher for forty years and after a trip to the Holy Land, started doing a slideshow for many of the churches in the New Bern area, again spreading the good news of our Lord. Her love of this community and its youth led her to run for Alderman of the Fifth Ward in 1973, where she served four terms marked by exemplary and energetic leadership and the vital accomplishments of the Board. In 1985, she was elected as New Bern's first woman mayor, serving two terms, and was a powerful influence for good in the growth and progress of this community, and was one of New Bern's prominent and influential residents. She earned the respect of all whom she came into contact and the love and affection of a host of friends. Ella received many awards during life. She was most proud of receiving the Woman of the Year Award in 1976, the All-American City Award while she served as mayor, and finally, the Order of the Longleaf Pine, awarded City Award while she served as mayor, and finally, the Order of the Longleaf Pine awarded to her in 2010 by Governor Beverly Perdue during New Bern's 300th celebration. I'd now like to ask my husband, Steve Bingle, representing the Bingle family, to come and speak on behalf of the family.
Is it okay if I say, "Thank you, dear"?
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Steve Bingle. And along with my three sisters, Linda White, Pat Boyd, and Sandy Sibley, we want to congratulate city officials, staff, employees, all those folks that were involved in this great renovation of this building. We also want to congratulate the Morgan family on Mayor Morgan's portrait and dedication. Both of these leaders, community leaders, shared a love for the city of New Bern. I think they also had to have a love to serve as public servants to its citizens. And they also had a love for the history of New Bern. It's only appropriate that they are now and always will be a part of our local history. In thinking about what I might say about our mother, I thought it would be better to say or tell you perhaps what, if she were here, what she would want to say to you. And perhaps she would tell you how she would like to be remembered. As I look at her portrait, there's no doubt that she would have a comment about the portrait, whether it's her hair, her dress, it'd be something that would not quite be right about the portrait. But I also think that she would tell you that something is missing from this portrait. And when I tell you what I think she would say is missing from the portrait, my sisters are going to nod their head yes. Mayor Outlaw's going to nod his head yes. Alderman Asher, if he were here, he would also nod his head yes. And I think anyone that knew my mother for more than five minutes would also nod their head yes. And what I think she would say is missing from her portrait would be her Bible. She carried that Bible everywhere with her. And I know that when she came into this room in particular, whether she was sitting in the Alderman, Fifth Ward Alderman seat, or in the mayor's seat, she would have that Bible and she'd set it in front of her. That Bible was her instruction guide for how she led her life. It was her reference book for how she made decisions on behalf of the city of New Bern. And I'm sure she would tell us tonight that it would be her desire that every leader across this country would follow her example in having that Bible and following that Bible. So, I would think that she would tell you that she would not want you to remember her as a politician. In fact, she would be the first to tell you that she is not a politician. But I do think she would like to be remembered as a good Christian woman who loved the Lord and loved the city of New Bern. So, thank you for honoring our mother with this portrait and with this dedication. Thank you.
Mayor, I want to again thank everybody who participated in this. I want to thank the citizens for allowing us this few minutes to celebrate our history. I think it's just wonderful, you know, when you think about history in the city of New Bern that's 300 years old, that we have family members that are here that can participate and celebrate in firsts, you know? And I think it's just really wonderful. And I want to thank you all again for coming out, the Morgan family, the Bingle family. It's just nice. It's hard for me to get my children in the same place, so this is really nice. Thank you all. I appreciate that. So, I really want to thank you. And at this point, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we have a brief recess for reception in the hallway.
Okay.
Motion and say, is there a discussion? Seeing none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Please meet us out in the hallway for some refreshments and see our new mayor's office and Alderman office.
We're going to get back to order here and at this time, we're going to do requests and petitions of citizens. And the first one we have tonight is Sandra, and I hope I say them last minute. Arison?
Arison.
Arison, please come forward.
And as she walks the board, it's very rare that you hear somebody say that I grew up with this person in New York. So, graduated with a brother from high school, so welcome, Sandra. It's not very often to hear that.
Thank you. So, first, I'd like to congratulate the Morgan and Bingle families. I'm glad I picked a night when you guys were serving cupcakes. And just to introduce myself briefly, my name is Sandra Arison. I'm an infant toddler specialist at Craven Smart Start. And my goal tonight is to familiarize the Board and everyone in attendance with Craven Smart Start. In the interest of time, I create a fact sheet and I hope you'll all take a minute just to look it over. So, I am here to start an educational process about advocacy, early childhood education. This video is something I created a couple of months ago for educational purposes and we're using it throughout the state. Early childhood education should never be a partisan issue, but sometimes it is viewed as kind of loosey-goosey. So, I want to assure everybody here that I produced this video from a very conservative point of view. And if you want to know how conservative, when I was interviewing for my kindergarten admission to school and asked what I wanted to be when I grew up, I said a mother and a Republican. So, that's my frame of reference. We at Craven Smart Start hope that tonight will be a first step that we take to work together to promote our youngest citizens and to ensure the future of our community. So, enjoy the video. Thank you so much for playing the video. You guys missed the good music, but I'm available and I'm reading out to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra.
Okay, next word, Margot Fessperman.
Good evening, Mayor and Board members. My name is Margot Fessperman and I live at 516 Craven Street. During recent weeks, several departments and associated divisions blended in perfect harmony, much like a well-conducted symphony, as the wind instruments rise to meet the string section. I'm referring to the removal and replacement of old sidewalk sections heavily damaged by the roots of trees. And all these steps were performed in four movements. One, sidewalk removal and initial exposure of root system. Public Works Streets Division, led by Daryl Nelson, arrived with his baby backhoe and gently removed each damaged section and artfully placed them in the bed of a truck for transport to disposal. This procedure exposed the damaging root system, which closely resembled something left over from Jurassic Park. City employees and passerby's were awestruck. Two, removal of the offending trees. Mike Horton, Tree Division of Park and Rec, and Matt Shelley of HPC observed and concluded that if the roots were removed from the trees, they would fall down, so they had a hazard. Enter the Leaf and Limb Division to remove the guilty trees, quick and easy for the crew with a bucket truck and chainsaws as they artfully maneuvered among the limbs. Three, roots and stump versus modern machines. A full understanding of the challenges ahead required the assistance of the Stormwater Division of Hydro Excavation. High-pressure water and massive amounts of mud sucked up and stored in tanker-style trucks. Finally, the roots lurking but inches below ground level were fully exposed and the work was now rising to a crescendo, asking, well, how will the roots and stumps actually be removed? The music swells and the Public Works Crew returns, this time with a front-end loader equipped with a four-in-one bucket, and the battle began. Who would win, the equipment or the stump? Like a blast of the horn section, the equipment held the stump in its jaws and delivered it to the disposal truck. After a brief intermission, the grand finale, installation of the new sidewalk. The sidewalk crew returned, bringing gravel, filter, and forms for site preparation. Of course, every performance has a prima donna and apparently, this was a cement truck, waiting and waiting for the grand entrance. Once poured, the concluding movement produced a spectacular, smooth, even sidewalk, now safe for all walkers, either residents or visitors. Thank you, Public Works, Park and Rec, and all the subdivisions for outstanding public service with crews who are careful, professional, polite, and a pleasure to know. Please share these accolades with them. They are valuable resources for the city and citizens. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Our next petition is Ramona Green.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
I'm petitioning today because for five years, I've been an entrepreneur. I've also been an educator. During the wake of COVID, I just said, you know what? After this year, probably want to give an educator a pause. My sister and I decided to go in together and become entrepreneurs together. And right now, we have a hot dog cart standing. We own two of them. God gave us double for our trouble because I only wanted one, but the man in Florida said, "You got to take both of them." So, we took both of them and the journey itself to owning the carts and getting an inspection, all of that was fine to me. I know what it's like to have a state to come and inspect your kitchen. I have popcorn as well. So, this part that I didn't understand was the commissary part. That part, and forgive me if I get emotional, that part was harsh on us. I kept a journal of how many businesses in this area and outside of the area that told us no. And in total, it came to 15. That is 15 restaurants that we patron. We spent our money there and when it was time for us to have an opportunity, told us no. Some of it was fair and some of it was just like, I don't understand what a commissary is, so I don't care. Goodbye. I know that this city is the opportunity city. Justice Morgan said that about his father. His father wanted people to have opportunities because if I can thrive in this city, imagine how many other people behind me are looking at me saying the same thing. "New Bern, you have got to give us this kitchen." I looked online and the furthest city kitchen that is thriving is in Asheville. That is the only one in this state, in Asheville. I was ready to go. I was like, "Let's go. What do we have to lose? Holler these trails in the cart and let's go." You need a city kitchen for entrepreneurs who are getting denied commissaries. You need it. Because I can guarantee you, I'm not the only one. Unfortunately, we got a commissary, but we had to go miles out to get it, which means we had to meet the inspector out there. We have to go out there every time. We got to pack stuff up, get ice, and then travel miles out just to get to our place of sale. That is gas mileage and I draw the top, so you know what I'm talking about. The point is, there are more people that's coming behind us that we have an obligation as entrepreneurs to find help for them when they need it. And we beat the trail by ourselves with hardly any help. I didn't take no for, I didn't take too many no's because sometimes I was like, okay, but I kept going. Unfortunately, we were blessed to find a commissary. But imagine if this city had one where all we needed to do was go fill out paperwork, the kitchen setup, there's something there and it cuts out having to negotiate your rent because we had to negotiate our rent. They wanted us to pay 200. I had to go down to 175. We're not saying we want to do it for free, but we have, like I said, there are more coming. And if they don't have the necessary tools to start their businesses, then they get disheartened. I know my sister and I, we spent nights crying because we thought it was over and we put all our money, rent money, light bill money. I put everything I had into it because we both quit our jobs because the entrepreneur spirit is in us. It's in us. We were born into it. Our father was that way. So, I petition for this city to come back into the conversation of having a city commissary. It creates jobs because someone has to look over it. But more importantly, think about all the little small businesses that can just come right into your city, pay you rent, that's our money. And you can keep, it's the gift that keeps giving. Keeps giving. If you don't do it, I guarantee you, I'm going to take a corral of individuals and we're going to either try to put our money together and we're going to, y'all going to see us again, and we're going to ask for a building, and then we're going to put a city commercial in there. I don't care how much money it takes. You guys got a chance, you got an opportunity. You can't have an opportunity zone in a city that doesn't give at least its small entrepreneurs, the small fries, an opportunity to grow their businesses. Think about that when you go leave here tonight. I'm an entrepreneur. Welcome to our world. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Green.
Our next petition is Barbara Sampson.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
First, I know I have to give honor to God, but I just want to say a statement. I just want to come here and talk. First, I'm glad, I was honored to be here for the dedication for Mayor Bingle and Mayor Morgan. I enjoy that. And of course, a cupcake too, but I enjoy it. All I want to talk about is diversity in the workplace because I've been looking around and I've come to different meetings, but I don't see, I see a lot of people in different positions, but I don't see none of us, you know? And we need to come to the table so that we can help make some decisions for our group. And you know, like we be having different programs and different sessions, like the one we had Saturday for the people's seminar. We always invite the Board of Aldermen, we always invite you guys because we want you to see that we just not sit home. We want you to know what we about. We talk about COVID-19. We talk about employment, how to get people that's not working, working. We talk about getting jobs, how you can get some training, you know? We want you all to come and sometime come to go to Craven Terrace. You know, even though I stay at Pleasant Hill, my work is for everybody, not just for where I stay because I used to be in Craven Terrace, but I know that you can move up from Craven Terrace, you know? But it takes something in you to have to do this. But they want to see, sometime they want to see you guys out there so that they can see that you all care about us, you know, Jeffery Field. We want you out there in Jeffery Field, not just about staying away. Not just about staying white, because you know, that's my passion anyway, staying white, and you know I want it right there where it's at. But come in Jeffery Field, look at when it rained real hard. Come and see how the drainage and stuff is doing, you know? We need somebody there to talk for us. We know we have people representing us on the board of aldermen, but we need everybody, not just the one that representing us, we need everybody there. So because we know that if all you are together, then that's even more powerful for us, because we know that we got a movement going on, you know, a Black Lives Matter movement going on. And it do matter. It matters to me, it should matter to everybody. Not because we have money, or not because we have status, but just because we are people. You know, love is what make the world go around. So that's all we want you to do, is come out sometimes, when the People Assembly is having some function, just come out there, show that you care. Say some words of encouragement to us, you know, because I'm going to be encouraged anyway. But let other people that think you guys forgot about them, let them know you still listen to them, you're still looking out for them, you still want to put them in key positions, you know? Let us come to the table. Everything's about communication. We don't want you talking to us, we don't want y'all talking at us, we want y'all talking to us, and taking some of our plans or what we want to do. And thank you.
Ms. Barbara.
Ms. Barbara. Ms. Sampson. I just want to let you know that you did not, I did not see you at the 3 o'clock session on Saturday, but I did attend that meeting.
They told me that you did, but I didn't want to call names and stuff, because I don't want to offend anyone, but the ones that came, you know, that came, I was there in the morning.
I just wanted you to know, because I told you I was coming, I didn't want to let you know.
Yeah, I was there in the morning, because my mom was being dead, they honor her 2 o'clock, so I was going to be there, but I made sure I made the morning, so I could see who was going to be there. Yeah, so I can say something.
I was out of town.
I know you said you was out of town, so you know, but just come out, you know, y'all give us a shout out sometime.
We need Barbara, it'd be nice, Barbara, it'd be nice if we had a schedule, because I got a phone call about it the night before, and I was out of town. And if we could just have a schedule when the next meeting, then we could plan for it, but really didn't know the meeting was happening until I got a phone call the night before, so.
If you know you all want a newsletter or something to show you all what we trying to do, we'll give you a newsletter. We come out every two months, we go, you know, I'm the vice president of the People Assembly, I don't know, speak, because I'm the vice president, you know? I don't call other people names, but I can call mine, so you know? I don't care about my name being called, but I'm the vice president, so if you want a newsletter, I'd be glad to get you guys a copy, so you can see exactly what we about, you know? We about our father's business.
Amen. Thank you.
Okay, this time we'll go down to file the consent agenda.
Mayor, there's no questions with the consent agenda. I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution to approve the consent agenda as is.
Motion and second is their discussion. See and know, let's, I'll throw the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll throw the same motion carries.
We get it back in the building, you don't know how to ask me, we get back in here, huh? Just get off now.
Yeah. All right, let's go to item number seven.
Mayor, Alderman, next item is a presentation on the Pembroke infrastructure. As requested by Alderwoman Harris, George Childs will share a presentation to review infrastructure maintenance plan for FY '22 within the Pembroke neighborhood.
You guys left off the theme music for him coming up for his presentation.
Good evening, Board. We had a meeting approximately a month ago with Alderwoman Harris to talk about what infrastructure maintenance we are currently planning for the Pembroke community, and I'll go through that, and some things that will facilitate future resurfacing in that What we consider the Pembroke community, at least as the Public Works Division, is from Newsome on the south, all the way up to EF Tompkins to the north, bounded by Country Club Road to the east. There's approximately 45,000 linear feet of road within this community right now. The 2018 current, the paving ratings for that community right now is a 94. Now granted, that was done in 2018. Those ratings that were utilized in 2018 did not take into consideration ride quality. So as we're going forward with new ratings, we're going to utilize ride quality in that grading system. So the closer you get to 100, the better off the road is. This past year, we had one block of Charles Street, which was rated as a 39. Now, it's a section of roadway that had a failing culvert underneath it. We're able to, in the last year, to replace the culvert, repave that block, which would take that rating back up to a new pavement condition. What we're planning going forward for this fiscal year through our maintenance at our street division is something we call nipping. And what we found in the Pembroke community on a lot of the roads is, once we peel the grass back, we're exposed to an additional 18 to 24 inches of actual asphalt. So there's actual asphalt shoulder underneath the grass. We'll be conducting a pothole and failing utility cut patches and intersection repairs, and I'll have some examples of that in just a minute. All this work is currently, maintenance work is going to be done under our current fiscal budget, so it's not additional capital expense to do these maintenance things. This is Emerson Street between New Bern Avenue and Acoc Avenue, and this is a before picture, and this is what it's like once we've nipped the shoulders off, where we've peeled the grass back off of the road, rewiden the road. Now, what you will see in that road is a pothole right in the center. We've currently already repaired that pothole, but that is similar to several places in the neighborhood that we do have. That was an old utility cut that the patch had actually lifted from the subgrade.
Just saying, George, why don't you have that foot back? Obviously, to the left, that's water standing. Are you also working on, there are some anomalous situations of drainage in that area, and that in itself impairs the road condition, so are you also incorporating some drainage considerations?
We will, because you will see some of the shoulders that get built up over time. This is common throughout the city, that the shoulders will build up, and then it's not going to let the water fall into the ditch. If there's a ditch available, obviously, we're going to facilitate two makes way holes to get that water to the ditch, because it does degrade the pavement condition, especially when we have new pavement in there, we don't want the subgrade wet all the time. This is New Bern Avenue, where we did a similar shoulder nipping, and you'll see how much actual pavement is under the shoulder where the grass is. Now, this is, this is one of the worst intersections in Pembroke, and we're fully aware of this one. This is at the intersection of New Bern Avenue and Country Club Road. There are several utility patches or potholes, the subgrade has failed. We anticipate receiving, if everything goes right for shipping, our new paving machine in two weeks, in 14 days. We are planning to remove all of the asphalt from this intersection and repave the intersection with staff in Public Works. So that's one where patches just no longer work. We're going to redo the entire intersection. This is an old utility cut that has continued to fail at the intersection of Emerson and New Bern Avenue, and there are several like this, where utility cuts have failed over the years, that we'll need to take out all of the asphalt and improve the subgrade, and then repave the patch. If we were talking about, and these are unfunded numbers, just to give you ideas of what it would take to repave everything in the Pembroke community, using current prices with an inch and a half overlay, and also using, that will have to mill the shoulders down to get the crown in the road, you're looking at approximately $1,350,000 with current prices. And that's just to give y'all some budget numbers, this is not a request right now. We're also speaking with Alderwoman Harris, discussed interior sidewalks. So we looked at a couple options, and what seemed in, within our staff discussions, would be more accommodating to the neighborhood. And this would be taking from Country Club down McKinley, coming back south down Sycamore, coming back up Acoc, back to Country Club Road. So you'd have basically a circle in there to bring you back out to Country Club, if that was so desired. In doing that, when we estimated these numbers, there's some considerations that need to be taken into account for utility relocation. We've got some utility poles that are close to the shoulder of the road. We may need to do some ditch relocation, and there is some, the boundaries in that neighborhood, the roads are not actually in the center line of the right of way. So you've got some areas where you've got property lines that come up to the edge of the pavement, so we'd have to look at that, see how we'd have to swag the sidewalks through the areas. And what I really wanted to stress in this is, the repairs that we have scheduled for this year, and this is throughout the city, when we do these repairs, what we're looking at doing, the cutting the shoulders back, also patching, doing full-depth patching now that we'll have a paving machine, these are all costs that we would incur when the roads are resurfaced by a contractor. So what we're doing is giving the existing roads a better ride quality. We've done work that we would be charged in the future by a contractor when they resurface it. These areas, when you have a pothole that's in that condition, similar to the pictures, the contractor is going to charge us to do some type of full-depth patching, which we would request to make the road stable in the future. So these are just some of the examples of what we're planning to do in the neighborhood. And I hope I addressed what Alderwoman Harris was looking for, and some of our future tasks in that neighborhood.
Yes, thank you so much. I'm so excited. If you can send me that in like a PDF, so I can forward it to the Pembroke community. And just so people understand, the last two slides in regards to the paving, all of Pembroke or the streets was just an idea or a thought process. So it is something that if we do look to go forward to or want to petition the rest of the board, we would obviously need to have some community meetings to discuss what can and cannot ultimately be done. So I appreciate all of your hard work and everything that you did. I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Anything else on item seven?
No, sir.
Madam Clerk, did I miss a petition earlier?
I think you have one more. There were five.
Come on, come on up. I didn't see one, but we, beyond the page, you speak for it, and if you would use your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Marley Ferguson. My address is 205 Longleaf Drive, New Bern, North Carolina. I'm here to speak on, in support of the commercial kitchen. I am not from New Bern, but I've been here for about five years. I've served in the community in multiple different ways, from doing theater downtown to volunteering with RCS and working with multiple churches, and volunteering in the school system, working with a lot of your children. And I've grown an abundance of love for the community. Being a fully independent 26-year-old adult, it's hard. I want to do it the right way and stay on the straight and narrow, you know? It's hard to pay your bills and just kind of make ends meet. And something that's helped me do that is cakes. I do custom cakes and have for 10 years, and even coming out of the pandemic, it's helped me with my income. The one thing with that, with having so much support from my community, it's hard to meet the demands, because I have a very small kitchen. Even when it comes to selling at the farmer's market, there are rules there, and one of them is if you have pets, you can't sell there. I don't have pets, but living alone, I would love to have some, so there's a lot of, you know what I mean? Like, if I had a kitchen where I could go to to fill and order for a four-tier wedding cake and seven dozen sugar cookies at a drop of a dime here in town, that would, gosh, save me so much money and give me so much peace of mind, you know? Just like this young lady was saying back here, it's hard to find those resources, and it's very frustrating, you know? And expensive, very expensive. I know we have the support here, you know, and great products here, but like she said, if we don't have the resources, we have to take them somewhere else. And I don't want to do that. I love New Bern, I love contributing here, and feeding and growing here, but if I can't afford to be here, if there are no resources, then what can I do? You know what I mean? I think it would truly benefit our community, and I think it would be great to just kind of come together as a coalition of chefs and bakers and do something great in this community. And not just that, I can see it with Craven Terrace, bringing those kids out and coming together as different restaurants, and teaching them how to cook, you know, teaching them different ways and inspiring them to do something right with their lives, you know? I truly believe it would just be a great thing for here. Thank you.
Young lady, what was your name again?
I'm Marley Ferguson.
Marley?
Yes, ma'am. My wife, Marley.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Marley.
Thank you.
Did I miss any other petitions? Okay, let's go to item number eight.
Mayor, next item is to consider adopting a resolution approving the donation of the structure located at 602 Gaston Boulevard to the Redevelopment Commission. At its February 10, 2021 meeting, the Redevelopment Commission endorsed exploring the feasibility of moving the residential structure to 911 Eubank Street, which is a vacant lot owned by the commission. The cost to move and rehabilitate the structure is estimated at $115,128. The commission has over $232,000 available for rehabilitation through the approved CDBG plan. At its June 9, 2021 meeting, the commission voted unanimously to accept ownership of the structure with the purpose of rehabbing it into affordable housing within the redevelopment area. As directed in a resolution adopted by the Board of Alderman on June 22, the city clerk cast properly noticed on the city's website, the board's intent to convey the structure. A memo is attached from Mr. Ogier. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Or any questions?
Mayor, if not, I'd like to make a motion, we adopt a resolution approving the donation of structure located at 602 Gaston Boulevard to the Redevelopment Commission.
Second.
Motion and second is their discussion. See and know, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Oden.
Alderman Oden?
Yes.
Alderman Des?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number nine.
Mayor, the next item is to consider a resolution approving a grant from the North Carolina Governor's Highway Safety Program. In 2020, the New Bern Police Department became the law enforcement liaison for Region 2. In part, the liaison coordinates and organizes highway safety activities and works with participating agencies in the region to coordinate safety-related traffic events. This position also hosts quarterly meetings, works closely with the Highway Safety Program to determine what equipment is to be made available to agencies in the state and assist with events such as conferences, campaign kickoffs, and state fair. This position comes with a $25,000 grant, which requires no match. The grant will cover all expenses for travel, training, and equipment related to the position. If you have any questions, we have Chief Gallagher here to answer them.
This board have questions?
What type of programs are we looking to bring into the department, and how beneficial would it be for the area?
I'm sorry, sir, can you repeat that, please?
What type of programs will this, the type of trading and looking at crime now, how would this help to direct the officers to make a difference in the community through this new grant?
This grant would be specific only to traffic-related incidences, so the biggest impact that we would have would be impaired driving opportunities, not only in training, but to place our staff in locations to have an impact on impaired driving, seatbelt violations, and other training related to traffic safety. So with respect to criminality, this grant would not impact that.
Thank you, sir.
If there's no more questions, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving a grant from the NC Governor's Highway Safety Program.
Second.
Motion and second is their discussion. See and know, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Des?
Yes.
Alderman Oden?
Yes.
Question?
I just wanted to say that I had the opportunity to be able to have a meeting with the chief and hear about some of the programs, and I just wanted to publicly, like I always say, I'm very transparent. Thank you for the work that you're doing in just this short period of time that you've been here. It's very instrumental, and it's going to be a benefit to our community, so thank you.
Okay, let's go to item number 10.
Mayor, the next item is to consider a resolution authorizing the addition of streetlights. Mrs. Simmons of 2306 Simpson Street has requested additional street lighting. The area was evaluated and determined to not meet the city's light standard. Staff has recommended two streetlights be installed at an estimated cost of $1,063.80. The monthly utility charge would be paid by Public Works will be $16.88. We've got a memo from Charlie Bichard. We're happy to answer any questions you may have.
This board have questions?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the addition of streetlights on, what is that, Simpson? Simpson Street.
Second.
Motion and second is their discussion. See and know. See, and let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Des?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number 11.
Next item is to consider a resolution approving an agreement with the North Carolina Railroad to extend the license agreement for the Union Station Train Depot. The city previously entered into a license agreement with the railroad for the purpose of rehabilitating the depot. That agreement expired on July 1 of this year, and its proposed agreement is to extend until December 31 of this year. The New Bern Preservation Foundation has made progress in the preservation and rehabilitation of the structure, and the extension will allow more time to pursue those efforts.
Yeah. Ms. Hughes, I would like to comment. I really appreciate yourself, Alderman Odom, Alderman Bingle, going to Raleigh, and particularly Alderman Bingle's leadership and knowledge base of quite a few dynamic issues associated with the railroad here in New Bern. And I think we had a very beneficial meeting. And so, again, for folks that don't know, railroads can, are very important, and there's just, you have to be, you have to have good communication. And I want to thank the staff and Alderman Bingle particularly for the leadership role she's taken in those communications.
I do have one question for this, Scott. On this lease, why is it only one year? Is it because we're going to revise it to try to do something different? Is that the reason it's only one year?
That's what they were proposed to us, and we can deal with them for extensions as we go forward.
Right. So again, you know, thank you, mayor, for your comments. The issue has been is that the railroad owns the depot, they own the building, they own the land, and had leased it to us with the understanding that they would only lease it to the city, and then the city in turn sublet it to Preservation, who raised all the money, got the grants, did that to restore the building for use. But the little catch was that the total building had to be done totally before they could lease out any of the space, which made it difficult for them because they've beautifully restored the bottom, a portion of the bottom floor. If they could rent that out and have that be used, they could get more income in to use to continue to rehabilitate the building. The lease does not call for that. So I just want to make sure that in doing this, I believe in our discussions that we had last week, or on the first one we went up there, is that, you know, we'll be working towards either them giving us the depot, and we'll take ownership of it, or some other arrangement that would allow Preservation to continue to do their work in rehabilitating this beautiful structure. So I just wanted to make sure. So at this point, we've got a one-year lease, but let's make sure we stay on the treadmill to, you know, get it done.
The goal was actually to, this is a six-month extension, and the goal
Oh, six months.
The goal was to come toward a more permanent solution within that time period.
Okay, so that, we'll do that. Okay. Just want to make sure. I don't know why I'm seeing numbers here. Well, with that being said, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving an agreement with the North Carolina Railroad Company to extend the license agreement for the Union Station Train Depot.
Second.
Motion and second is their discussion. See, and let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Des?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number 12.
Next item is to consider a resolution to approve an agreement for purchase and sale of real property with the North Carolina Railroad. This item authorizes the mayor to execute an agreement of purchase and sale of real property with the North Carolina Railroad for the partial located at intersection of South Front and Hancock Streets. The property is identified as tax partial ID 8-001-C-071, and the purchase price is $227,000.
Do I have any questions?
Mayor, I'd like to make a, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the resolution to approve an agreement for purchase and sale of real property with the North Carolina Railroad.
Second.
Motion and second is their discussion. See, and let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Des?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries. Let's go to item 13, starting with Alderman Odom. Appointments?
Mayor?
Yes.
You have number 13. Do you have the?
Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry. I've got the old. Thank you very much. Consider adopting a resolution designating deputy finance officers. Item number 13, sorry, I've got the old.
So mayor, North Carolina General Statute 159-28 requires that all obligations be pre-audited to ensure there is efficient budget to pay the sums obligated. Pre-audit is performed by the finance officer or a deputy finance officer who has been designated by the board. Any contract, agreement, or purchase order that is not pre-audited is invalid and may not be enforced. Lori Mulkin, our previous accounting manager, has retired, and so our goal is to make our current accounting manager, Kim Ostrom, and the senior accountant, Tanya Harms, as deputy finance officers. Also note, Sonia Hayes, Director of Human Resources, was named as a deputy finance officer in 2014 for the purpose of pre-auditing salary changes and new higher salary and wage arrangements. Ms. Hayes will remain as a designated for that purpose. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. We adopt a resolution designating deputy finance officers.
Second.
Motion and second is their discussion. See, and let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Des?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries. Appointments? Alderman Odom?
Yes, sir, mayor. I would like to make an appointment to the HPC of Mr. John Blackwelder. He's the owner of the Aerie B&amp;B. Review his resume. He's got a lot of experience both private sector and also serving on boards such as HPC and other municipalities.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. All favorite motions say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Care of any other appointments?
That's all, sir.
Alderman Des?
None tonight, sir.
Alderman Kinsey?
None tonight, sir.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes, mayor. I am excited to appoint Isaiah Daniels to the New Bern Police Civil Service Board. He is a wonderful young man, a community leader. He has a background with school, and I think he would be a great fit for the board, so I'm excited to do.
Yes. That's your motion?
Yes. I'd like, yeah, I'd like to make a motion.
Second.
Thank you.
Motion and second is their discussion. See, and let's have a motion to say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Motion carries. Any other appointments?
Nothing.
Okay. Alderman Bingle. At this time, Alderman Bingle, I would like you to do some notable acknowledgements of some of our notable folks here in the audience.
Always good to welcome. We should always welcome when we have a visiting commissioner, Commissioner Beetham. I'm so glad that you are here this evening. Thank you for joining us. It's always good to have somebody from the county with us, so thank you so much for being here this evening. And I see in the back Tiffany Askew, who is the Executive Director of the Housing Authority. Thank you so much, and we're glad you're still here. So thank you for visiting us again tonight. Thank you for being here.
Okay. At this time, Attorney's Report.
Nothing important tonight, mayor.
City Manager's Report.
Got one thing, mayor. We're sad to announce that city employee Eric Glenn passed away over the weekend. Eric was an inventory control clerk. He worked for us for a little over two years. His funeral will be this weekend in Kinston, so just wanted to let you all know.
Okay, anything else?
That's it, sir.
Let's go to new business. Alderman Odom?
Yes, sir. Two things. There was a press release put out by MBPD regarding golf carts and whether or not they are legal on city streets. Alderman Astor and I cover the only golfing residential communities within the city municipal limits. Attorney Davis has told us that he can draft an ordinance that would help to allow golf carts to be used within those neighborhoods, only in those neighborhoods. So Alderman Astor, who obviously is not here tonight, asked me if I would bring this before the board. We would like to get this on a future agenda to get that clarification in front of the board so we can make sure that golf carts can legally be driven within those communities on those streets. The second item I have, I was going to mention it when we did item number 10, but I figured I would just wait until new business. I'm wondering if anyone has any ideas or thoughts or suggestions on how we could do a citywide sweep or campaign about streetlights that are out. I've got about seven, a list of seven. It's a mixture of Duke and City of New Bern, so it's not all ours. But I'm just curious, is there something that we can do? Oftentimes, obviously, it's this time of the year, you have to be out later when the lights are supposed to be on to see that they're not. I know Alderman Kinsey has mentioned in the past about the police department, fire department. I think they're probably the only two departments within the city that are actually out and about when it's nighttime. But is there something that maybe Charlie or his department or somebody could suggest? Because we sit here and we have these evaluations, and we say that we don't have, we're not meeting the city standard for streetlights, so we make the investment, sort of like we do with sidewalks, and then we don't maintain the ones we already have. So I wanted to know if, we don't obviously make a decision tonight, but I just want to put that bug in everyone's ear. Maybe in the next meeting, we have somebody come with a genius idea on how we can try to get these fixed.
Well, the last time we asked, Charlie said that basically it's easier for them to come to us and tell us than to, you know, do it the other way.
Yeah, I meant the ones, I meant the lights that are already installed that are, the bulbs are out.
Watching, okay.
Is there a place on our website where people could go to the website and report something that's out?
I believe there is.
Because that would make it easy as well, because we could put a call out to citizens to at least help us to identify outages in areas. If it was easy.
There is an area where you can do that, and citizens do use that service for not only that, but other requests as well. And we can definitely come back for next meeting and give you an idea of what we propose, and we'll work with staff on that. Thank you. That's all, mayor.
Well, I appreciate you mentioning that because with 460 employees and seven elected officials, I really don't understand why as many of them are out as are out. But I know one night that I walked around the downtown area, and, you know, I encourage everybody, take your phone, and on every telephone pole is an identification. Take a picture of it, email it to anybody up here, or to staff, or to our website, and it will be taken care of. But I do think we could do more of a public relations of anybody out there that sees a streetlight, report it, because that's part of some other things that have been talked about tonight, about the city coming together and more educational opportunities, more work opportunities, more safety opportunities. And so I appreciate you mentioning that. Alderman Des?
Yes, I do. I have two things, mayor. And one is, and I know we've all seen it on the news, but I just wanted to get it out to our citizens. Please, let's talk to our children. It's hot now, and I know that a lot of them wants to go jump into some water, but please, you know, talk to them and tell them, don't be jumping into our lakes and rivers around here because of the alligators. It's hot. And I know I have seen children in the past jump into the creeks, into the, into some of our creeks around here. So I just wanted to make, to say that, because we got to take care of our babies. Also, I want to bring back to this board a discussion. Back in April of this year, April 13, our Board of Alderman meeting, we had our very own Dr. Statt from Craven Community College come before this board and made a presentation to us in reference to the commercial kitchen and also a lease agreement for this college to take complete possession of the entire campus. So now, that lease has not come back before this board yet, so I just want us to take a deeper dive into that conversation. We had two young ladies here tonight that spoke on behalf of the dire need of a commissary kitchen, and I too feel that way, because at that particular meeting, I was very adamant about it, and so was Alderman Harris and Alderman Kinsey as well, about having that facility there where we can provide some resources for our citizens. Now, at that meeting, I also made a statement that I know that Amanda and her staff at Development Services was working on trying to land some grants. And along with our city grant writer, Ms. Margaret Shields, they were working on grants to try to outfit that kitchen. And that's been a concern of mine. It's, I don't want to see that project just be thrown away, because we as a city, we work for all of our citizens. And if we can have some resources available to us through grants and a partnership, Ms. Margaret Shields provided to me a list of the potential grants and a partnership with Carolina East Medical. Now, I think that right there with Craven Community College, the city, and Carolina East, I think that is a win-win situation for us to obtain and outfit that kitchen. I have a list here of the potential grants that I would like to pass out to each one of you, and please take a moment to look at this. If you could pass those down, we'd appreciate it, sir.
Barbara, Ms. Shields is here. Can we have her come up?
Well, if she would like to, she can, but I just want to, I just want to say a few more things, and then I would like for the board to chime in. And I want to hear some of your concerns, because at this point, if we can potentially get these grants, have a partnership with Carolina East, I think we can provide, we can get the funds necessary to outfit that kitchen, which it will provide, and with the college business center, the small business center there, which will provide the education, the skills that's needed. And then also, we all know that with Carolina East, with the environmental factors, with the cafeteria's food prep area there, their line cooks, this project at the Volk Center, managed by the City of New Bern, will give our citizens a start, especially the young entrepreneurs. They can come there, they can prep their food, they can make their food, they can sell their food right there on campus. And the reason why I want the city to outfit it is because we all know Dr. Statt specifically told us that Craven Community College was not in the business for profit. But if we as a city outfit this building, provide those programs, provide that service, I think it would be a tremendous benefit to our citizens. So if anybody else have anything that they would like to say, I would appreciate it, your thoughts, your concerns, how you feel about it. And I also forgot to mention, but you can see here from the information, that Margaret and Amanda have had numerous conversations with the executive director of HR at the hospital. So this partnership can be a very vital tool for us to aid on to the college and the city. So that's all I'm going to say right now. I want somebody else to chime in and raise your concerns, and what do you feel that if this is not a project that we think that we can help aid our citizens?
I just, Margaret, I would like for you to update your list of stakeholders. I've been, for some reason, I don't always get the invites to tell me when the meetings are, but they probably stopped during COVID, correct? So we haven't had one since before COVID. So anyway, Barbara, I've been part of that stakeholders group, and my name was not included on the list, but I have been attending those meetings, and my name should be on that list.
I feel the same way. Your name should be on this list. I did prepare it, but, you know, I'm quite sure that was an oversight, but.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Well, I'll hop in there. Obviously, at that meeting, I was a big proponent and supporter of the Commercial Kitchen. I think it was an amazing and actually an on-time statement for Justice Morgan to come here and speak on, you know, the first African-American mayor, and then also Ms. Bingle, when she spoke about her mother-in-law being the first woman mayor, and then Barbara Lee and Ms. Oranger. I think it's important that we are a city that has a foundation of firsts. I think it's important that we are a city that has a foundation of firsts, and so it's important that we continue to do these things first. And as we had these individuals that came here and spoke about, it breaks my heart, as it did on April 13th, that we don't provide an opportunity for citizens in small business that deal with needing to be able to use a commercial kitchen. I love the community college. I have no problems with Dr. Stacks. I just think that it's very important that we have the educational aspect, which that partnership would be with the hospital, which is an amazing hospital that we have here in our city. And we're also able to create income for the city on that, create jobs, and also allow other people to create and maintain and stable their businesses. So I do hope that you guys look at this information briefly or now, because we've talked about it, and really look at the possibility of the city upfitting this kitchen and letting us go ahead and letting our staff that we hire, that we entrust with, to move forward with this project so that it is a win-win for everyone. Because the lease that should have been here that is not here currently technically is not a win for everybody, because we're leaving out small entrepreneurs that need commercialized kitchens. You wouldn't want someone to say no to you if you lived here. You don't want to leave. We don't want our individuals to leave. So I'm just asking, along with my counterpart, Ms. Alderman, best in regards to, you know, supporting a motion that we go ahead and move forward with allowing the city staff, Jeff and Amanda, and the Development Services to make this happen so that we can outfit it and do what we need to do for our citizens.
And let's don't leave our grant writer.
Oh, yeah, yes, Ms. Margaret Shields.
I appreciate her, you know, scouting out there trying to find these grants. It's something that we need to do. You know, we have a lot of citizens here in this city that would love to have their own business, would love to operate a restaurant, but they just don't have the funding, you know? And if we have an opportunity now that we can outfit this building through grants and partnerships and provide that space where they can start up their business, I think it's, it's just a golden opportunity for us as a board to be able to provide those services to our citizens.
And it's enough space for the community college to come in?
Yes.
And be able to do those classes. So it does become a win-win for everybody, so.
And if the college wants to come there, and I don't know, I guess I will have to talk to Jeff or Amanda about that, I don't really know about that end of it, if they want to utilize that built, that kitchen two or three days a week, or however the schedule, whatever we work out, you know, that would be, that would be awesome.
We're in to win it, and, you know, like our slogan is, everything comes together here. So this is an opportunity for that. And again, I would just love to be able to shout out some of the people, obviously, like you said, Almen Bingo, you have Allison Dunn, Anne Shout, Jim Shout, you have Becky Rice, Anthony Harrison, Ms. LeVey Singleton, Sweet Potatoes Farm, Talina Massey, Scott Murphy, Bernard George, Mr. IPOC, Chad Davis, Corey Purdy, Robert Johnson, Sheila Henderson, Maria Cho, who is on the redevelopment commission, which is a very important stakeholdership, because they already engage part of our communities. And you have nonprofit organizations, Promise Place, Mercy Clinic, Carolina East, one of our own sits on the board, Habitat for Humanity, New Bern Area Chamber of Commerce, and then you have Craven County AG Extension. So these are just all of the great, amazing stakeholders. Let the city be a part of that. Let's go ahead and move forward with these grants. Let's get these grants, let's do what we need to do. That's how I feel.
Okay, Almenkenzie.
With all that being said, where do we need to go now with this situation here? Since the college saying they were going to take responsibility, I don't think they have contacted us since the last time we've spoken. So what can we do to get the ball rolling?
Can I interrupt you before you go there?
Go ahead.
I have a question that was brought up during one of the petitions tonight about the commissary being a requirement. Who requires a food truck to have a commissary?
The health department.
Which is a Craven County function?
Yeah, your county has a guideline for food carts and food in here.
Yeah, come up to me. Yeah, we can't. It's the county, so it's the county health department that requires it, not a city.
Yeah.
Yes.
It's a state guideline, but it's also a guideline for the county as well. We have to get two, we have to get two inspections. One is the initial, and then the other one is a 30-day follow-up. We don't have to be at the commissary to get that 30 days, but when you start, you've got to be at your commissary. And if you don't have it, they won't even let you submit the paperwork.
Has any of this request been put before the county commissioners to ask for their support?
It can be, because here's why I'm saying that. You've got other people who are not even in Craven County that need a kitchen. I know a lady in Carret, she can't even, she works at Carret Community College. She can't even use their hospitality kitchen. And this lady has amazing, amazing talent with food, has a whole business, she needs a kitchen. And you have people like that who are going outside their own boundaries to get it. If you're the first, the guidelines are already put in place. The county has a guideline, the state has one.
My, my second question is, I don't know that, is there anybody sold that it has to be in that particular location, just because that was the original plan?
For space, I'm saying this, for space-wise, it's, that's a safe place. Here's why. Your storage space, you have two different sections, you need a dry space and a cold space. Restaurant kitchens, if they modify it for us, they have to build shelves that have a dry space for us, and you're talking a lot of bread. And then a cold space, if they have like three or four freezers, they have to put spaces for just our product. So a small kitchen wouldn't suffice. We've been in battle with the state and a county inspector when it came to a person who we chose at the first beginning, who couldn't modify it because it was small. A big space allows more small business owners to come in, they can section off their spaces, they can have lock boxes for just little stuff, but you've got to have a big, big space.
So part of the Almen Bingo and Almenkenzie and Mayor Outlaw will have to speak to this, because this started before the rest of us were on board, but the depot was supposed to be a project to bring activity to that part of town. They have struggled trying to find tenants, trying to find funding to get the depot finished. Is there a win-win here that we can partner with these same groups to get the depot outfitted and have a kitchen in the depot?
And bring the other player in, which would be the health department.
But that, the health department doesn't come into it.
But the, the. Does she not say you have to go through them for approval?
Yeah, we could, the health department, we did not need the state for our inspection. We had to go through the health department.
So bring them in.
We had to submit paperwork, we had to submit schematics to the health department only. The only thing we did with the state was get our Articles of Organization, ILOCs and stuff, that's it.
So, so what we need to do is meet with the county commissioners, come together, see what we have to do from there.
Respectfully, I don't think we need to speak to the county commissioners in regards to doing that in the city, even though we are citizens that live in the city and we also are represented by a county. This is a decision that we, to me, don't feel we should be pushing off. We should, as a city, like we stated in the last meeting, we need to make sure that we provide this service, because there are people, we have food trucks and carts and everything else where the young lady, you know, would like to be able to utilize our kitchens. And when we get to trying to make a win-win in moving it, it's not what the citizens want. They want it at the Vault Center. There's enough room there for the college to be able to come in and do their classes, and that was the most important part. So if you're going to teach, you're going to teach regardless where it is, and whether you have ownership or not of it. The most important part is our paying citizens, whether you're county or city, have a right for their tax dollars to go to something that's going to benefit them. And there is a cry, only two came, but there are many out there. We've seen it during June 10th, when we had individuals that needed vendor locations, but we didn't have a community kitchen for them to prep. That was a perfect opportunity. So therefore, if we're in support of these things, if we're in support of coming together, we need to make sure that we do that. And that's why I feel we need to go ahead tonight and make that motion, that we allow our staff with the original process of letting these grants go through, they're sitting there waiting for us to take them, outfit it, and do what needs to be right.
Your point is well taken, but you still have to go through.
I will say this, I will say this.
Is that something you go around?
You cannot go around that, and here's why. Between food truck and food cart, a food truck uses an extra set of gas tanks to regulate their burners. The woman who I spoke with, with the county, said, we would only use the state just for your gas expo, for if there's a gas leak or something like that, they have to check that. But that doesn't give you a full pass on your inspection, you still have to need the county. However, the county is something where, even if you use the city, if you set the city kitchen up, they got to come in and see it. However, when you are using that kitchen, and we put that on our paperwork as a commissary agreement, all it takes is for them to just to come out and say, well, let's look at it. And they go through all the paperwork, but to get around them, I don't think.
You have to do that.
Am I answering that properly for you? To get around them, I don't.
You can't get around them. They have to inspect it.
Right.
So you bring them and make them a part of this.
Um, but why would you leave them out? Let me, let me ask a question. I wish Amanda was here tonight. Jeff, is, Jeff, is there anything, is there any light that you can shine on this subject, since we're talking about health department and what's required and all of this, or, because...
Excuse me, just one second, one more. The board allowed the lady to speak. Now, running a new business, this is typically where Alderman, elected officials, and this is great what you're doing. If it's, if it's the board's pleasure that this be open to a forum discussion, that's fine. I would tell you that I appreciate this being brought up. I think it's a very important part of our city. But I can tell you before we belabor this for the next hour, that it would be better that three of them, a volunteer and former ad hoc, and meet and work out your disagreements. And I would suggest the three of them that have the meet, the most concerned and maybe are now in together on it, meet, then get information from the health department. We can't make a decision tonight without that. Get information about if the community college is going to continue to provide workforce development and other important things for future employment, and partner with this, and who is going to manage this, and who is going to allow what vendor to come in at what time of the day and use A or B side for storage or for preparation, and what time we're going to be out so that the next vendor can come in. And is that going to be on a weekly basis? Are we going to allow city trucks only? Are we going to allow somebody from Kinston to come over and use this place for food preparation? Obviously, there's a desert in New Bern. There is a need for nourishment. I agree that at some point, this city needs to follow the leadership of some of the Alderman on this board in this area. But to sit here for a couple hours when there's quite a few questions that need to be carefully considered. Where is the location going to be? If you're going to go to this amount of proliferation of this item, where are the vendors, once these 15 new vendors come to New Bern? And we're allowing city and non-city folks to do this, where are all these people going to sell their waders? Are they going to do it at Lawson Creek? Are we going to use it?
Park on Broad. The weekend, Park on Broad.
See, and what we need is, is an ad hoc of research done, then this needs to be done in a workshop where we can have proper interaction between this board and concerned citizens, and we can move forward. But that's my two cents. Now, the question that needs to be answered is, is the board ready to make a motion in a second to allow other, other citizens out here to speak?
I, before we do that, I have no problem. I think there's some confusion on the health department that I would like Mr. Jeff to come up here and clarify, and the rest of the stuff.
The gentleman here, we need an answer.
Where can we get one proposal already that would answer a lot of your questions?
Pretty much all of them have been pasted, answered, pasted.
Okay, I need a motion from the board to allow open discussion of citizens at this time. Do they have that motion?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, a motion in a second to allow input from citizens about this item. Is there a discussion before we make that?
My discussion is, I would prefer a work session with, to come prepared with questions and more information, and then let as many people that it's notified, there's other people in the public, if there's 50 food vendors, then the 50 should show up, but I think we should have a work session.
Why do we have to have a work session?
So that we can get all the information.
But we never afforded that opportunity on April 13th, when it was brought to us and we didn't have the information, and you had Dr. Stacks come in here and do a proposal. Why is it when it's a necessity for people in our community, we always have to research?
I'm one, I have one voice, I have one voice.
We have, we have a director.
I would suggest that I would prefer a work session, if that's not the will of the board.
Right, I don't agree on work session. We have a whole director.
That's how I feel.
One more. At this time, there is a motion in second, and I think that the, it appears to me that the board wants to move forward with public discussion. So I'm going to, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same?
No.
Okay, so at this time, the majority was to allow public input, so if you would, sir, go ahead and answer those questions.
My name is Dr. Gregory Holson, First Missionary Baptist Church. We've been working with Jeff and some other avenues. We've already tore down a building, and what are we, we're trying to build the incubator process for youth and young people that are leaving when they graduate from college, and there's no opportunity here for them. So what we're trying to do on that corner is build office space, to build storefronts that we're going to get grant money to make rent where they can afford and to start their businesses. So, and we're already in the process of writing grants and putting our own resources together to put that incubator in motion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before I make a comment, I need to ask the city attorney a question. The, the proposal that was done on April 13th, I was here when it was done, and if I'm not mistaken, the president of the community college said that once the city gave him the building, no entrepreneurs will be allowed to use that building because their laws wouldn't let them do that. Is that correct, something to that nature?
I don't recall those finer points.
He's not for profit, he said. It's not that for profit.
Okay, so since this board, this board voted to go into contract with the community college, how can they rescind that?
We haven't signed the contract.
I'm asking the city attorney, please. Can that be rescinded without it being?
Yes, sir.
Okay, now, if the board goes against their word with the community college, you're treading on thin ice. You have a building that's getting ready to be tore down, that can be converted into a community kitchen. I've asked you guys time and time again to put money in a Duffield community. There's a building that was the old gate shop, sandwich shop, that can be retrofitted to do everything you want it to do, to do what this young lady is asking. The reason why I don't have a food truck, and I went out of the restaurant business, was because of what the county said. I had to have a commissary. I told my wife, I said, I'm thinking about building a commissary so people can come in and just use it. But I couldn't find a place. I wanted, I wanted it to be in a certain area where they could, it wouldn't cost them a whole lot to get around. But I couldn't find that place. But you have a building that you can move, that if you want to move it to the Vault Center, move it to the Vault Center. But it will allow these people to do what they need to do. You've got $3 million in money. What are you doing with that money? You can take part of that money, retrofit that building, and guess what? You satisfied the community college, and you satisfied your citizens. Stop bickering amongst yourself and get something done. I talked to Jeff. Somebody wants the building. Why can't the city get the building back and do what they're supposed to do? That should have been a thought all along. It was a restaurant, convert it to a commercial kitchen. You have the funds. You can't tell me you don't. Because I was in this room with. Because I was in this room when, when, when the financial officer told you exactly 3.125 million is what the city of New Bern got in May. You're gonna get another 3.125 million next May.
Mr. Woods, we can't use it for that purpose. That's the whole problem.
Okay, so take that money.
Make sure you clarified on that.
Take that money, put it wherever, and you can take money. Um, trust me, I know you can do something with the money for the citizens. And you can move money around to get what you need done. I know you can do it. And it doesn't take rocket scientists to figure this out.
Mr. Jerry, could you please come up?
I, I just wanted to say that I appreciate what you're saying, Mr. Woods, but there was countless meetings years prior of stakeholders. Right, so they want it in the vault center, and we have not signed a contract. We made a motion to allow, but we have not signed a, we didn't sign a contract. I am personally not, because I voted against moving forward. So I, I'm, I'm personally stating that we have, we don't have a signed contract. So there's nothing signed that we've committed to. We've asked to make a motion on that day for the city attorney, the city manager, who was Mark at the time, to work out these details for this lease. And we have not seen the lease yet. And we have these grants and this opportunity, so.
I, I didn't want this to become an argument with anyone because I just feel that this was a project that initially started out at the vault center, to be at the vault center. And I just wanted to, and the citizens wanted it at the vault center. And I just didn't see that, you know, we should, and I understand what Mr. Woods is saying, but initially, this program, like Alvin Harris said, this program, this project has been talked about and overtalked. And I just think that, you know, we need to move forward. And we're not gonna, you know, Jeff, please reiterate and, and correct me if I'm wrong. I don't know if you've had any contact or talks with the college since our April 13 meeting. Can you highlight us on that? Because we don't, as Mr. Woods said, I am not for, for breaking our word when it comes to an institution that of, of higher learning that can benefit me, the city, and our citizens. So what is your input on this?
As far as the engagement with the college, Alvin, best, the only thing since that April meeting that I've seen has just been a review of the lease, which was essentially an adaptation of our master lease that we have with the Bolt Center Training Facility.
Okay. So what are your feelings? I, I know Ms. Amanda was, is very instrumental in, in this project, but she's not here. But what are your feelings about this, this commissary, commercial kitchen, commissary kitchen, however we wanna say it, being located someplace else and not at the vault center? Because I just think, yeah, with the college there, with the business center there.
Yeah, it's, uh, the synergy of the site works to, it's, it's probably the, um, the most opportunity for success for entrepreneurs in that area, which is, was the basis of the entire program to start with, was, uh, positioning, uh, entrepreneurs and folks that wanna get an education or skill, um, put them in the best position to succeed. So the location, obviously, is one of the best locations that we could probably think of to do something like that with the frontage on a new interstate and on First Street and all the improvements that we've done in that area, along with the Bolt Center and the college and all the resources that it offers there. So again, the synergy of placing it there, um, is, is probably second to none. Um, but again, as Mr. Woods said, you know, if, if we, if we thought about the other building, we, we could have done something with that also. Um, but placement and location is the key there. Um, it's a very highly visible area. And also, it's already, it's been built for a kitchen. So we use the, uh, we use our EDA funds, um, to upfit and fix the old warehouse facility. The area is sitting waiting for the coolers, as the young lady said. It's, it's waiting for the installation of the stainless and all the kitchen equipment. So it's, it's ready to go.
Okay.
From that standpoint, it's, it's much easier to get a kitchen at that place than to start somewhere else.
I have heard quite often that this was to be an entrepreneurial base for an individual or a family interested in getting into the food business, food truck, et cetera. So the question I've always had is, is this a permanent, uh, location for a, a person, uh, to prepare their meals? Or is it a place that for one year or six months, just like a person at workforce development that is getting a skill, a trade to go out and make a reasonable living? Is this, uh, a temporary, uh, opportunity for somebody to use this kitchen to learn that business? And then at some point, they would move on to have their own preparation place? And then a new person would come up and would have that opportunity? See, there's all these questions that, we had a workshop and we had a committee.
May I interject? That's already been established. Everything you said, that facility, the vault center kitchen.
I'm not getting that though from.
All right, yeah, exactly. We're, we're, that pulled together. That's been talked about, but I haven't, because the question has always been the management. How is it gonna be managed? What are the rules? The concept is there. I have read the concept. I have, you know, I've got the original grant. I've got all that. What you're speaking of is the finer details that I don't think have been in place yet. That may be the case. That, I agree, that may be the way to do it, but I, I haven't seen that laid out. And if it is, I'd like to have a copy of it. If Jeff has it, Jeff, do you already have all those details?
No.
Okay.
We have no reason to.
Okay.
How hard would it be for us to, um, pull the details together of figuring out who's gonna maintain the, the commercial kitchen? Is it something that you think that the development services would do?
Um, well, unfortunately, Amanda is not here. Um, and that's what she did in Havelock. So she managed their kitchen.
That's right, I remember you saying that.
Facility and the convention facility. So she's very familiar with, with operating and managing a facility like this. And she did so as the economic development director for the city of Havelock and the executive director of the TDA. Uh, so I would rely on her expertise, as well as Little Washington is also going through the same process right now. They're a little further along than us, and they are applying for grants and have secured. What have they secured?
Um, so far, $45,000.
$45,000 for the same kind of, uh, concept up there. So, uh, we would, we would reach out to them and see how. But it's essentially, uh, you know, a scheduling issue. Um, we have days where people would come in and do certain things. It's all been best set. The, if the college has a program that they're running, it could run on Tuesdays and Thursdays and on Monday, Wednesdays and Fridays, it could be a commissary. Um, so those types of things are all, um, again, as Mr. Woods says, it's not rocket science. Um, but it would have to be worked out, obviously. And I would, we would lean on Amanda and her expertise in the past in doing so for seven, eight years.
Okay. And I just think it's vital. I apologize, Mayor, but you know, I'm passionate about this, that, you know, outside of having the college, we also have, you know, Carolina East, and we're dealing with the pandemic and having to learn in regards to environmental food services. My thing is, is this paper shows the amount of money that is waiting for us to get. Um, we have a site visit. The money is there. All we have to do is step up to the plate as leadership in this city, at this board, at this time, and say, listen, we will be able to work with the college because their main point was education. You can educate people in that building. It doesn't matter where it's located for them, they're going to be able to educate them. Our purpose is that we live in the city. We have residents that live in the city and in the county. And again, their tax dollars have a right to be spent on something that's gonna be a benefit and not just the 15 people. There are several people that reside in the city of New Bern and Craven County that have the need for a commercial kitchen. And it's a benefit to us. It's a benefit to the food industry, because you're teaching people. And it is a stepping stone, because I wouldn't wanna be a food truck and always have to have my truck here. I wanna get to a point where I can grow. But I can't do that if the for-profit stops at the education. I need you to educate me to be profitable and sustain. That's why we partner with nonprofits. Like I would say again, the nonprofit you have, the Chamber, you have young professionals, young urban professionals, you have what Pastor, um, is doing. All of these different organizations that deal with entrepreneurship. The Small Business Association, which is, is from the college. It is a win-win here. We have to take the politics out of this and do what is right. And that is to move forward to allow the development services team, the experts. We have an expert, Amanda, to do her job and serve this community and allow our grant writer to get these grants. The money is right there. And like our citizen, Mr. Woods, say, you already know I'm a proponent on our fund balance. We have a lot of money sitting in that fund balance. Where we could write the check ourselves with a stroke of a pen and seven votes to upfit that community or that, that vault center, and we choose not to because it's politics. Let's do what's right.
Well, Alvin Harris, let's don't say that we choose not to.
Well, we do.
Well, I mean, we're discussing it now. That's why I brought it forth, because it was very passionate to me. And we, and I'm bringing it forth to the board, because I think we need more conversation. But I look at the partnership that we have with Carolina East. I mean, you got food service workers. You, you got, you know, not just entrepreneur, not just food trucks can be at that. Uh, a service to be provided for food trucks at the vault center. You, you're looking at the, do you know the magnitude of employees that the hospital need to maintain their kitchen, their, their line workers? So it's a lot of different opportunities here, jobs, skilled jobs for, as Alvin Bingo said. We need, we need people to work at our restaurants. So here, we giving them an opportunity to get their skill so that they can come back out and work in the restaurants and work in the hospitality. That's all I'm wanting to see this done. And if we got Amanda here and Jeff and his department that can utilize this and our grant writer that can write these grants, get this money in here, why wouldn't we agree to offer this project here to our citizens? I, I don't understand why.
You brought this up tonight. So have you had discussions with the community college about this?
I didn't think I needed to have a discussion with the community college at this point because the agreement hasn't been signed. And I'm quite sure I was gonna leave that up to Jeff and his department. I'm quite sure they would go back and talk with the college to see if we can work this thing together, you know, providing this service to our citizens together. There's no way that we would go, even, I would even suggest Jeff or Amanda go forward with this without speaking to Dr. Stats or the college.
Well, I, I could, I could have been bored a lot better if you had brought some information that from the community college. I just remember early on that the community college had one idea, and I learned this from the simulator, that either the city of New Bern was gonna spend hundreds of thousands of dollars providing safety for our police department and for our surroundings, police departments and our sheriff's departments. We were gonna do it, but they had a whole chunk of change more than we did. And so it got down to who was gonna be in, in charge. And the city of New Bern decided to let the community college do it, and we upfitted so that we could bring that level of security and safety and educational opportunities to our law enforcement. Now, listen, say it way that over to this. I don't see the city of New Bern, um, being able to, uh, as you said, the hospital and all these other, um, opportunities to provide, um, educated, educated labor force for food preparation or whatever. I don't see it without the community college's involvement. But to bring this up tonight and not, and try to bring this to closure without having a workshop, bringing the community college on work. Alvin, um, Alvin, do you have something?
We had a question for Jeff. Jeff, why is it the kitchen in there right now?
Uh, we haven't, we don't have funding. Uh, we're, we're sitting on, what is it, $40?
$70,000.
70? Yeah, so we're, we're sitting on 70,000 right now, um, which is a grant we applied for before the change. Um, so we just, you know, with, with COVID and the deadlines, we, uh, we've had plenty of opportunity. We were partnering with the college to apply for a grant in January, and they, um, pulled out of that partnership. And I understand why now, we didn't know at the time. So we've just had a lot of odd kind of setbacks. Lawrence, um, and COVID, the shutdowns really hindered that effort. Um, but that, the reason why is we, we were charged with applying for grants and finding grant money to do so. And, uh, and it's just starting to trickle in now.
So Margaret, are these new opportunities, this on the sheet?
Margaret, could you come up to the podium?
No, they've been the opportunities all along. Um, we just either, um, had to, for example, the, um, ADFP, um, the Farmland Preservation Trust. Um, we needed to have a, um, we either needed to partner with the county or ag extension to be able to, um, apply for that. So, and that's only available once a year in December. Um, so, um, we, as Jeff said, um, we were in the midst of trying to apply to Golden Leaf. Um, and then the college, you know, didn't, um, provide the information that we needed for, um, the kitchen equipment. So there was some discussion about what the equipment costs were gonna be. So we didn't have a budget in time to submit that grant. The EDA grant, um, that was available in March, same sort of situation, so.
Margaret, going back to the kitchen, you didn't have the information in the grant packet that you did for, was it the tobacco?
The tobacco trust.
Remember, you had a whole packet and that had very detailed information, the, the cost of the kitchen, everything. Could you not use that information?
Well, we needed to update the equipment.
Okay, I mean, different equipment or just the cost of the equipment?
The cost of the equipment.
Okay, and you couldn't have done that without the community college?
Right, because we were discussing with the college, or Amanda was, the, um, whether entrepreneurs would be able to use that equipment. So that was part of the, um, delay in getting that budget done in time. So we found out then that entrepreneurs couldn't use the equipment if the community college owned it.
Right, because they said that the buck stops when it becomes for-profit. So, I mean, I know we talked about this a lot. And, um, my, my thing is, is I think we need to give Jeff and Amanda in that department the opportunity, um, just like we were willing to give someone else an opportunity. So I personally would like to make a motion that we allow Jeff, Margaret, and Amanda in that department to move forward with the rest of these grants and the fact, and all these partnerships that we have to be able to upfit the vault center for the community kitchen, the commercial kitchen, um, moving forward. And also to have that conversation to see if the college would still like to have education in there and, and partner. But I, I feel like we need to move forward and, um, let the city run it and, and handle it ourselves, because we have money sitting right here for us to be able to upfit it.
Well, I concur with you. I think we need to give them an opportunity, Amanda and Jeff, that department, because they were working on grant, trying to find grant funding before COVID, before, you know. So I, I think we need to give them an opportunity, since this was the part of the initial program, I mean, project. So.
Your motion, um, if we're at a discussion, are we, can I?
Alvin Harris made a motion and I.
Yeah, you have a floor right now, though. I'm not, you haven't yielded, so if you are still talking, I will wait.
No, I'm finished.
Um, I would really like to support and help on this. Uh, I, I don't, I don't hear a preamble of sorts as to exactly how this thing is gonna work. I can tell you this, if it has anything to do with workforce development campus, uh, you're not gonna get the blessing of the community college unless they're controlling it. Um, and having said that, um, I don't think the community college is going to, half of the time, run a workforce development community college, whatever they're gonna do as far as, um, kitchen preparation and things, and then turn the keys over for the other half of the time to whatever else is gonna happen that I have a lot of questions about. Is it a temporary educational opportunity for food preparation? And then in a year's time, this, this particular food truck or whoever, the catering business or the, the new employee that's got some contractual arrangement with the hospital, that they have to go on their own and provide their own capital improvements for their business? I, I just don't, I don't have enough facts to support the motion at this time. I would like to support the motion, and I would be more than glad to be a part of the discussion with the community college, some of the board, board members out there or the, the president of the community college. But I, for some reason, feel like that some folks are going one, one way around. But I, for some reason, feel like that some folks are going one way around to get this done and others another. I don't mean to offend anybody, but you cannot bring the food desert to an end in New Bern unless everybody is one piece of fabric. And that's going to be the city of New Bern and some sustainable income, general fund contributions to this. But there's a, there's a much bigger resource opportunity partnering with the community college on this. I think it would be great, having been a former community college student, that on that campus that there were food trucks. There were so many food trucks that some of them were across the street, Lawson Creek. Maybe that vacant split block, center block building that Jimmy Dillon hunted, maybe at some point, that could get used for something besides nothing. And we can continue to expand these opportunities, but I don't, I don't feel like we have the information that I can support the motion at this time.
Can I ask you a question, Mr. Mayor? You know how sometimes you get frustrated about the ditching and how you would like people to take the opportunity to your idea? So I know that it can be frustrating that we don't have all the answers, but if we allow them the opportunity, give them the opportunity to show us that it's going to be successful, that's all we're asking. That's all the community is asking, is say yes and see how successful it is going to be. Have trust and faith, just like you want someone to when it comes to those ditches and the ideas that you come up with. We want people to, to be inspired. We cannot be put up against the wall because the community college stops when it comes to entrepreneurship.
Yeah, and to that comment, which is good, I want the community college to continue to be able to be a leader in North Carolina in educational opportunities. You know, we have one of the best workforce developments in North Carolina. While other colleges, they're, they're doing away with them, ours is growing. And the more partnering we can do on that campus and keep the community college happy is more expansion of, of job opportunities from certified nurses assistant to electricians, plumbers, HVACs, to food preparation, et cetera. And so if we avoid and work around the community college and then they have resource opportunity expansion and then they say they don't want to do anymore. To me, the whole idea of that campus was, it was a walking distance of a lot of New Bernians that needed to get a certification or a trade. I do not want to personally, as a member of this board, do anything to impede or preclude the future expansion of educational opportunities for our citizens that we are not.
That there's still going to be education there because we've also partnered with the hospital for education.
That I don't know that we're as in sync with the community college as we were with the simulator.
Do we always have to be in sync with the college? They have the funds, they have money to be able to find buildings. It is, but not every single time. This is education, this is actually education for all of us. We're educating ourselves to understand that. Not everyone is going to go to college, not everyone is going to do a trade. There are individuals, you started a restaurant or your family started a restaurant, you started a restaurant and became an entrepreneur, you are a surveyor, you have your own business, you started your own business. I'm a real estate agent, I opened up my own farm, I started my own business. There are food trucks, there are carts and there are individuals that deserve the opportunity for someone to support them in their dreams by building the foundation. All we have to do is plant the seed and Jeff and Amanda and the rest of the workers will let it grow. We're only asking for a yes. Two years, give us two years, it's going to be less than that, but give us the opportunity. And I say us because I'm very passionate about this. You see me in the streets, in the community, entrepreneurs, you know that this is a passion, but I think it's important for us to look past. We're not going behind the college. We asked the college on April thirteenth, we'll partner, I'll support it, but can we have a commissary for individuals to be able to make money? And they said no. That isn't black and white, that is on live, that's on YouTube, that's on CTV three. Plain and simple. So we own this building, we have the funds and we have opportunities. That's my motion and I would like to call it if there is a second.
Okay, you're, okay. Okay, I think we'll have roll call this, just to be clear, or vote, or start with Alderman Odom. And Madam President, would you read that, the motion?
I cannot read the whole thing, I'd have to go back to the.
I was just short.
She said it was to allow Jeff, Margaret and Amanda and Development Services to move forward with upfitting the kitchen and have a conversation with Craven Community College in just.
Yes, yes, yes.
Would, would you, okay, you've called for a question, so.
Ma'am, she just got her second, are we in discussion phase now?
No, that was a second on the call. We closed the discussion.
She never got a second when she made her original motion.
She did, she made a motion, Barbara, you seconded it.
Yes.
So that.
Well, she never said I seconded it, she said she supported her.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine.
It's been called, that's not it.
Okay, I have no problem with discussion.
Okay, well then, unfollow your motion. Did you unfollow your second?
Yes.
And do you use your motion?
Yes.
Okay, we're back in discussion.
Sorry. Jeff, when did the vault center project start?
Two thousand and fourteen.
Fourteen?
Four thousand and fourteen.
When did we start to try to get funding for this aspect of the vault center?
Seventeen?
So two years before COVID.
Yeah, then we had Florence, I'm just going off, I don't know specifically. We've always, you know, so we built the vault center always knowing that we were going to have to upfit for the kitchen, for that equipment. So it was just kind of a time management issue at that point in time. So we did line up, you know, some funders and some opportunities and they fell by the wayside for other, other reasons, not because it was a bad project or, or anything, or people really denied it. Everyone that we've talked to wants to support it. We've had funders that are willing to fund it. So I could, I'd have to go back and probably look through my notes to get that, to get that number for you. But it was, you know, Florence hit us and then COVID hit us, so that stopped all that extra work that we could put in, you know, as we worked with the 404 and the 407 grants, which I'm still working through now today. To this point, I still get phone calls on those grant problems. But at that time, we processed one hundred and seventy-five applications for individuals throughout the city for their elevations and their buyouts. And that was a lot of legwork from all the staff in the department. So that's a long way of saying I don't know the answer, I'll have to get that for you. But it's been probably three years.
Can I ask you another one you probably don't have the answer to, but I'm going to ask?
Okay.
As far as potential vendors, entrepreneurs that wanted to use a commissary aspect of this, how many of those have petitioned the city over this tenure of this project?
That's another one I have to, I have, we kept notes of that. I remember at one point my list was at like five just random walk-ins essentially, people wanting it and supporting it and asking me when it's going to be ready and things like that. So I don't really have that answer. We've had the supporters group, I guess, that Alderman Best has circulated with you. We had meetings that were scheduled, we had a lot of opportunities to partner with, with Ag Extension and other community food producers, small and large. So I could refine that and get that list to you, but everybody on that list, and that's from what I heard from people being read off, there was a few that weren't included that were kind of the beef producers and the produce producers that were really interested in being able to not use the kitchen but to use the site itself. Because our program was never focused on the kitchen per se as a one issue. It was always, kitchen was part of the larger campus as becoming more of a market vendor area in conjunction with the kitchen. That could be used as a commissary or for cooking food and actually selling it to the community for events and things like that at Lawson Street Park and stuff. So we've had a lot of great ideas. So again, I can't answer that question specifically. I'd have to go back through my notes, I have years and years of notes on them.
Excuse me, Jeff?
Yes, sir.
So when the community college got, became involved with it, that's when the game plan started changing? Is that correct?
Ultimately, on that thirteenth meeting was essentially the first time I was kind of informed on that plan.
Because when we met, we thought that the plan was going to go forward with all the vendors coming in to participate. Then all of a sudden, the community college wanted to take the whole thing over and make a certified person become an vendor. So that changed the whole game?
Yeah, after, after that April meeting, everything changed.
Everything changed right there?
Correct, yes.
So with that being said, it's a lot of boat to it, buddy, a lot of moving parts.
Yeah, it's a lot of moving parts. Again, it's an exciting project and it really can be anywhere. To point to some of the points that folks have made, again, it's a great campus.
So do you go against the college?
Excuse me?
Do you go against the college?
I'm not sure if we would ever, I mean, I don't, I'm not sure if go against the college is the correct term. We'd look to partner with the college, as some of the ultimate have said. We'd have to speak with them about utilizing the space. They utilize space a lot of places for their trades and their services and things like that. They assemble, they used to assemble goods offsite, now they do it at the vault center. So I'm not sure what the answer is, if we can partner as far as allowing them to use it a couple of days a week for their server programs. I'm not sure what programs that they'll be offering.
So when it became profit, that's when everything changed?
Yeah, when, when the idea of entrepreneurialism and individual profit came into it.
That changed the game.
That's, I guess they're prohibited by state statute to be involved in a situation.
Correct, correct.
So the, all the grants that we've talked about, when the smoke clears, two, three years from now, the grants run out, what revenue stream is going to support this hundred, hundred fifty thousand dollar year overhead? What's going to support it? Is the city going to do it?
Yeah, I'm not sure with those numbers.
Is the community college going to do it? Is the hospital going to do it? Who's going to pick the revenue stream up year four?
Well, we're going to think positive because we're going to have an abundance of entrepreneurs that are going to have food trucks, carts, cakes, candy, I can list a million, chicken. We have a lot of individuals cooked on Calvary, authentic Jamaican food. So we're going to, we're going to think positive that when we do build it, because what do they say, build the dreams? If you build it, they will come and it's needed. Let's make the right decision. We're not against the community college, we're saying we want to be able to have entrepreneurship and that's what's important.
And I'm not looking at it from a perspective of this being a free program. I mean, there's going to be a cost for, for these spaces.
There's rent.
And rent, exactly.
But we have to give Jeff and his team the ability to make that plan. And to do that is by saying yes to allowing the city to move forward with upfitting it and making it the commercial kitchen. Give our team that has worked hard and over the years, outside of COVID and the hurricane that we all experienced, are trying to come back from, the opportunity to make this happen, not just for the city, for a win, but for our citizens as a win.
But, and then I just want to throw this in there, in the instance that the college, when we talk with Jeff or whomever talks with the college in reference to sharing this, that kitchen, if the college says, yes, we'll try it, or if the college says, no, we're not going to try it, we don't want to do that, then I think that, you know, we need to come back and look at a different avenue. But first of all, I think we need to talk with the college and see how they feel about this partnership.
Why don't we do that before we?
And that's why I would be voting no to this motion, not because I don't think there's something to talk about. And I believe after hearing more information tonight, there is something to talk about. But I want to talk about it, so I don't want to move forward on something that I can't sit everybody at the table and talk about. And I, I would prefer to do that, so I would.
I just get, you know, I'm not going to keep going back and forth because everything is always recorded, but we never get that opportunity because we didn't get that opportunity on April thirteenth. We were hit, it was a sneaking stop. It was, it was presented, Jeff has even stated that the game has changed, there's things that happen behind closed doors, I've spoke about being transparent. There's no conversations that need to be had, it's either a yes or a no. If you say no, that's fine, but at the end of the day, we don't always have to research and have conversations and meetings on top of meetings to do the right thing. We weren't afforded that on April thirteenth, when he had a whole plan for the whole vault center. That wasn't fair to us and it wasn't fair to the citizens that went to these meetings, left their families and had these meetings, missed dinner or throughout the day was working, that didn't get an opportunity for that to come to fruition because there was politics. We got to take politics out of it and do the right thing. So.
You know, when this was discussed on the thirteenth, I was blown away because I had no clue of what was going on when Dr. Stats came before us and presented us with that presentation. And it just, it just bothers me, it just seems like you're like, I'm just getting so frustrated with this board. It just seems like when it comes to the black and brown people, and I'm saying this and I really don't speak out of character a lot of times, but when it comes to black and brown people, it seems like this board has a problem with it. And I just can't see that, what we have discussed tonight, giving Jeff an opportunity and Amanda and this grant writer to go back and talk with the college before we sign that lease agreement and see what comes of it. Why would you not want to vote yes to this tonight? Whomever is going to vote no, why would you not want to vote yes to this? It's just been, it's, I'm just getting frustrated with this whole board because I'm seeing the racial tension here, I'm seeing the racial, I could go on and on, but I'm not, because I don't want to act out of character here. But I had to say that because it's time for the people, the citizens of this city to hear this. And it's just frustrating. I don't see where this, it's a win-win partnership with Craven Community College, the city of New Bern and the hospital. If you serve on the hospital board.
Yeah, I'll address that.
I'm just.
Are you done?
I'm through, yeah, I'm through. I've been wound down, I'm through.
Ms. Shields, I got a question for you. Mr. Attorney, please keep me straight, I've always tried to be very careful and cautious not to intermingle for boards we serve on, but when you asked Carolina East to support this, did you tell them that it would be a for-profit entity?
No, we went to talk with Ms. Hunter, with Leslie Hunter, about the possibility of their interest in training, using the kitchen and also, it was still during the height of COVID, so we talked about the environmental services aspect of training there as well.
So I'm just, I mean, this has never come before our board to make this decision, but I don't know why we would provide money to a for-profit kitchen when the plan right now is that the college will have a kitchen, which they have money to pay for, which is a county, it's a county entity, and we would support them through a scholarship just like we do with nurses. I'm not sure why that's on here. And then also the Tobacco Trust Fund, did we not apply for that and not get that grant?
Correct.
Okay, I just want to be clear. As far as the timing goes, I will never discount anybody's passion for what you have. That's the reason that you're on this board is because you're passionate about what you do. I just wish this passion for this issue would have been here four years ago when this board got set in place instead of waiting until now when we've already made an agreement with the college. And my last question for interim city manager or director of development services, why have we not signed the lease? Are we not waiting for paperwork from EDA that this board made a decision on?
We are still waiting for the EDA. We reached out to them this past Friday to find out the status again and it's still under review according to them. So basically, ever since I was appointed, we've been dealing with them on a weekly basis.
So the delay in us moving forward with what the majority of this board decided is because EDA is waiting to approve or deny the change order and request.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Here's a motion and a second. Let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
No.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
No.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Deegan?
No.
What is the vote, Tom? Madam President?
It's tough. So it fails.
Okay, is there anything other in, under the business, Alderman Best?
No, I have nothing else, sir.
Mayor Outlaw, I'd like to make, bring an alternate motion forward. I'd like to make a motion that we make an agenda item on this and we get all parties present, such as the community college. We can do it in, I'll take the suggestion, the board, it doesn't have to be a quorum, it could be three or whatever, to bring back to this board, but have all parties. be three or whatever to bring back to this board, but have all parties, have, have Mr. Jerry there, have the community college there. And I'd like to offer that as something because I agree, we should be talking about this. I have no issue with that, but I want facts. And right now, I, I don't have facts.
So can you answer why we weren't afforded that opportunity on April 13th when he came with a presentation?
So I'm sorry to say this in public, but you should have talked to Mr. Stevens because Mr. Stevens was well aware of this and it was not my problem or your problem that he did not give that information to you prior because the information was provided to him in a full report by the community college. So I don't want to say things like that in public, but you've asked me to do that, so I'm going to tell you that, you know.
Okay.
I'm happy to, to further have that conversation. So, does anybody have a second to that so that we have an alternative to doing this? There's no reason for it to be dead and dying. I appreciate your passion, Barbara. I will say I, I feel a little, I'm not insulted, but I, I feel, I feel that, you know, I guess I am offended that you would say something like that because I care about every citizen in this community, but I, I care about the total, the majority of people that we have to help. And there's many people out there that need help right now. I just want facts. I'm not saying that this is not something we should do. These grants are what ifs.
This one is.
The person's coming, yeah, okay, the Cannon Foundation is coming. What, what are the requirements of it? What, you know, we're in here, all they have to do is the site visit and we get the seventy five thousand? Is that correct, Margaret?
So it's not voted on until August, but.
So we don't know that we're going to get this rate?
Right, we'll know in August. Typically, when the Cannon Foundation comes to make a site visit, they're interested in the project and they're going to give some.
Again, I would just, I'm, I'm trying to put the branch out there now to say, let's keep the conversation going because there is enough passion around it. Either you can let it die or we can say we're going to get together and try to pull all the interested parties in and try to find some resolution. Because yes, there is a win-win out there. I don't know what it looks like, but there is a win-win out there. So that's my motion.
One question. The grants that you apply for, can you use them for profit or nonprofit? Do you have to specify that?
So some of the grants have to go through a nonprofit, but the ones that I've cited on there are, can all come to the city. We didn't have to have a nonprofit organization to apply to the Cannon Foundation.
Ms. Margaret, he's asking, do they know that, that with this money, it's going to be outfitted and there's going to be a for-profit aspect to it?
Yeah, they know. Thank you.
Yeah, that, I mean, the Cannon Foundation is, would support that because it is producing entrepreneurship.
Stability. So I'm, I'm going to say I appreciate everything that you said in that although I, I dislike to have meetings, to have meetings because I, I remember when we, when we were having the meetings and we had the opportunity to have the North Carolina Tobacco Trust Fund and there was a lot of things that happened to take that away. I just don't want to get caught up in the politics again and that if we are going to really come to the table, that the end result is going to be a commercial kitchen and it's going to be a for-profit opportunity for entrepreneurs. If that is what you're agreeing to, however it works out, then I will second your motion.
Well, I, I want something that would provide that, but I want facts. I mean, if, if we're going to do this and we have to charge somebody five hundred dollars a month to do it, I want to know that because then that's not fair. To the entrepreneur out there, they may not be able to afford that. So we're going down the street to provide something that the everyday person is not going to be able to afford, then I don't want to do that.
But if it's five hundred and they're making two thousand dollars a month off of the food that they're now able to create.
I understand, but what if they're not and they can't afford that?
We have to speak positivity into our citizens. So what I'm saying is, is we, we have to get to that point.
Trust but verify, you know, trust but verify, you know, that's, I, I agree, I agree, but I just want to make sure we, you know, again, who's going to run it? I, I am concerned that we get into this and down the road, we have to provide staffing and everything else. I would rather outsource it and let someone else do it. That was the idea behind the college, outsourcing it so they can do it. So we don't have to be laden with the responsibility of employees and other issues that come up. Insurance, all of that that we have to cover with food and, and liability and the things that you have to do. Again, I'm just, I'm, I'm reaching, I'm putting the branch out there. We could have walked away from this tonight, said, sorry, dead issue, and walked away, done nothing.
I mean, that's what happened on April 13th. We should have had this olive branch before that happened. So I, I, based on that, because again, I'm passionate about this and I'm for the people, by the people, I'm going to second that motion that we come together, the key people, that means the one representative from each organization so that we don't have thirty, forty, fifty people that are going to make decisions. So if you're watching, if you're on Facebook, if you can hear us, please get in contact with us if you are interested in this commercial kitchen and let's, let's figure it out if that's what the motion is, I'm going to second it.
Is that workshop? What is that?
No, I would, I would say not workshop because I would not include the majority of this board. I would make it so there was not a quorum.
So who are the?
A working group.
Who are the representatives of this board?
The mayor, you know, if you want to be sincere, believe in the board, or pick three. Three would not be a quorum, that'd be fine with me. I don't have to be involved. I'm just, again, you two are passionate about it, pick a third person, put a member at the college.
Madam Quirk, would you read the motion?
The original motion was to have an agenda item come before the board and all parties are present, such as Craven Community College, Development Services, Mr. Rudy Gary. Sir, are you adding to it that it would be a working group and not an agenda item?
Yes, I'll take, I'll withdraw the agenda item and maybe make it be a working group so it's not caught up in all the things that we have to do.
So it's not a board meeting, is it?
Correct. And then that working group can report back to the presentation.
Where are you going to have this?
In our new conference room.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, is the public?
Yeah, it would be a working group.
So it would be in here maybe?
No, not necessarily in here.
I mean, you got to have enough room for the attendees.
Yeah, of the public.
So.
Well, I, I would think, I would hope that you would bring all the parties to the, the working parties to the table.
First.
Just first to get that and then come back to a public meeting.
And present what we've got.
Present what you found.
Kind of like the parking committee.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, so we don't need a motion. We're just, we're, are we all?
I'd like to have something. I mean, we got to start somewhere and I think you do need to make some sort of a public.
Can I ask a question?
Yes. Well, we're under discussion, so yeah.
Um, why, why is this just food trucks and cooking kitchens?
Oh, it's not. We wanted the, the market center too because you heard the young lady say that there's a lot of stipulations at the food market. We want the original idea to move forward.
So you want a plan, so if somebody that wants to start a screen printing shop and they want a piece of equipment to screen print, but they have nowhere to put it, we're looking for all entrepreneurs?
No, we already have that covered. The Yale Center, the Village, they offer that, they have that there. They have like that program there.
This is just food, right?
Yeah, this is specifically for the food, a, a commercial kitchen for entrepreneurs to be able to food prep. It's approved by the health department because once it's built, the health department has to come and certify that kitchen and then they can go around.
My point, maybe I'm just off, it's getting late, maybe I'm off track. My point is, is if somebody in the audience or watching tonight says, well, I have that entrepreneurial spirit too and I want a place to do my, my business, but all this talking conversation is about the commercial kitchen aspect. What about everybody else? Because Jeff said he's had five or so people walking off the street and, you know, there was, there was two here tonight. You know, what if there's twenty people that want to do something and they want to say, well, why isn't the city going to subsidize me? Because, and my point that I'm trying to get to, is that not what we were doing with the county with the entrepreneur center?
That shutdown.
That went south because people didn't utilize it.
Because it wasn't in a good location and that's politics too, Mr. Odom. To your question that you said is that if we sat here and we're trying to create everything, then it stopped when we said yes, or the majority of you said yes on April 13th because the college only wanted to do the things that were a benefit to the college and you left out entrepreneurs. So these are a form of entrepreneurs and then we have a community, we have a village that picks up and fills in the gap, but this is one of them that's important because we have to combat the food issue. So we're not, we're not in a shortage of shirts, we're in a shortage of people earning money that don't want to go to school or don't have the ability to go to school or to sit through getting, you know, a trade, but they can cook. They got their grandparents' recipes or whatever the case may be. That's, that's where we're at, you know, so that's, that's why it's so important.
All right, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to roll call starting with Alderman Dale.
Alderwoman Harris, you're good with the reported motion?
That, that the motion is we're going to create a group.
A working group.
A working group and then come back to the board and present what we've had, come together with.
Correct.
Okay. Alderman Beagle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Bess?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries, new business, Alderman Best?
No, I don't have anything else, sir.
Alderwoman Harris, new business?
Um, yes, so just two things. I know that we all have an opportunity to look in our local news. I was so excited and passionate about the article about affirmative action. Ms. Barbara Sampson came up here and spoke on it. And I, you know, been saying since 2018, especially getting with you and Ms. Barbara about the diversity, equity, inclusion officer. And I think the information that was provided in this article, the information that they provided to the community, there is a lot of support behind it. And I think we need to pull together another working group, which bringing the, some of the individuals from that organization to the table with the city to have a discussion about creating and maintaining and funding and hiring a diversity, equity, inclusion officer for our city. Because some of the things that Ms. Barbara expressed, you guys already know, I, I have a strong feeling in, in those same concerns about things that go on within the city and within the city when it comes to hiring. We banned the box and we need to see a benefit of banning the box. And based on the census, based on the numbers, it doesn't, the math is not mathing when it comes up to the representation of people that work for the city. We're not saying hire people just because they're a minority, hire the best candidate, but you have to give them that opportunity. You have to be able to seek them out. You have to have relatable people. We need a liaison. So we need to come together and, and work this out so that we can fund this position because we have the money to do and do what's right. We want all citizens to feel like they're cared about. We don't need Ms. Mama Sampson coming up here saying that she feels the city doesn't care about the black community. We don't need Aldermen sitting on the board that are of color, that represent majority minorities feel like, oh, we're always fighting. We, we need to start doing the right thing and not saying that we're not, but we need to come together and make these right decisions. So I hope that we can come together, whoever wants to, or have a working group, or this may be a, a working special call meeting, to really understand what a diversity, equity, inclusion officer is, what their job duty will do and how it's going to be a benefit to the city. Do you, do you guys think, I'm not sure if you read the article?
Oh, I've read this.
Do you think that's something that you would be interested in doing?
Um, is, is the committee going, I thought reading the article, you, at some point they were going to come before and make a presentation to the board, is that?
I'm not speaking for them. I'm speaking for the effort that has been going on since 2018. And in light of that article, it's important that we bring all stakeholders. And so because they're doing a lot of the legwork and the conversations that we've had and I've discussed and sent articles, now it's time to say, yes, we do, we heard you, let's come together and, and work this together as a working group with them on what's going to happen, not just them working on it and bringing it to us. We're at the table with them and talking to them, working it out.
Can I ask a question of the city attorney? Is, did he sit here?
I think he might be in the bathroom.
Okay, well, I, I just wanted to.
You got the assistant?
Yes.
Well, I don't want to put, and I'd be glad for you to answer, but I don't particularly put you on the spot if you're not prepared to answer because I know, I just was going to ask, what's the present equal opportunity policy of the city of Newburgh on books?
Well, Mayor, I certainly wouldn't want to impose and I think Mr. Davis would be the better.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. I want to ask that question to make sure.
You're not speaking like a true attorney. You're good.
Sonia, do you, I mean, that's, is that, that's the city of HR, do you, not to put you on the spot?
Yeah.
Could, could I make a suggestion?
Yes.
Could, could we get Sonia on our next board meeting as an agenda item and let her make a presentation from the city standpoint on what our policy is, what they do now to recruit? Can we do that first?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I, and I do want to say this because I, a lot of admiration for Sonia Hayes. I've worked with a lot of HR directors and a lot of different business, businesses and she is head and shoulders above anybody I've ever worked with, Sonia. You are the most professional woman. She's a woman of color and I think our city, there's a finest example right there that we have that person leading our city when it comes to hiring employees. And again, I've worked with many across the board and she is head and shoulders, you know, above anybody I've ever worked with. So I think to hear from her and what she has to say would mean a lot.
I, I definitely support it and with everything that you said, that's so important because technically right now, she is the only person of color in management and that's what we need to talk about, that's what we need to speak about. So I would love to be able to have her on the next agenda. Do we need two people or are we just going to go ahead and do for the twenty six?
With good directions, I would be.
Is that, is that enough time for you to prepare something?
You got your direction. And I do want to say, I thought that was a very good detailed article today. I thought it had some very valid concerns and points and I don't remember if it was about ten items or what, but it was a good number and I've had, I thought it was a very good article.
Absolutely.
Well, well, researched and put together.
Yes.
And Charlie Hall actually called me and, and my comments to him were, is that, anytime anybody, anything about the functioning of the city who may have a question, please pray before the board, we'll get them an answer, just like Mrs. Hayes will next meeting, give, give us a.
Absolutely.
An update on where we are. And I know that Ms. Hayes, on many occasions I've called her and, and I won't put you on the spot, Mike, but I know that I ask you, I wouldn't say annually, but often, is the city in compliance with the Justice Department and other items like that? So again, I, I was a little caught off guard.
It's all right.
Twenty percent and that, so.
But we have an opportunity to change that. But since I'm still undermining business, the last thing is that I have to have one more surgery, um, so.
Final point?
Yes, so this is my last meeting. I get emotional because it's a lot to go through, but this is my last meeting physically here for a couple of months. I will be on phone. I have not missed a meeting, I don't plan to. If there's community events and I cannot make them, trust and believe there is someone that is there for my team, for my village to answer questions. I have a great support team. So, you know, anyone that does know my story, the board, I ask for you to just keep me in your prayers because it is a major surgery to finalize, you know, what I've gone through. So I just ask that you guys, you know, think about me. I appreciate the mayor, he always calls me and checks up on me, Mr. Davis and everybody, Ms. Barbara. So I just appreciate you guys. This is one last battle I need to tackle and then I can get my life completely back and then I'll be back better than ever, probably the last meeting of October. So I just, you know, physically, I won't be here, but I will be here via phone. So you can't get rid of me that easy. Besides that, that's all I have for you tonight, Mayor.
And we will certainly be praying for you. The power of prayer, I've seen it work in people's lives so many times. So we will certainly be praying for you.
I want to ask, you will be in our prayers and we, anything we can do, please pick the phone up, you know, I mean, anything, just call me, call whatever. You got a little bit to you tonight about something that I thought was very important and you mentioned my passion for drainage and ditches and, you know, I have to respect you as much as you do me on that for your passions.
I appreciate you, Mayor.
And so I want you to know, I'll invest in you. I appreciate your concerns and I will pray also that this board will work through the concerns of providing more opportunities for entrepreneurial, profitable opportunities for income and for families and everything and at the same time recognize there is food desert in this city and anything we can do to bring that to an end is a worthy cause.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Um, Harris, the only thing I want to say to you is that you are covered by the blood of Jesus.
Amen. Thank you.
Amen.
Alderman.
Just really quickly, and it impacts all of our wards technically, but DOT mode last week and did a terrible job because there was trash all along the thing and just mowed all over it. So we got complaints. Foster did an amazing job in reaching out to DOT who said, sorry, we don't have money, we're not picking it up. Pretty much, that's what they said, is that correct?
That's correct.
So I want to thank the City of New Bern who today sent their public work staff out and cleaned up our highway.
I saw that, thank you.
And Parks and Recreation.
Oh, Parks and Recreation, sorry. But our staff was out there picking up and cleaning up because really, this is such a beautiful city and we don't need to have that trash out on the highway. And I want you to know that I made a phone call to Representative Tyson today and he is sending a message to DOT because we don't want this to happen again or we may have to send them the bill because we shouldn't, you know, have to pick up what they made a mess out of.
Absolutely.
So that's it. And then I do want to tell everybody, if you can hear me or not, there's been a problem on Facebook all night long, the sound. And people complaining, saying, you know, we're not trying to get the word out there and that's by no means what the case is. We have a new setup here. If you can come to the courtroom and see it, all the wires are gone, all of that, and they've done some really amazing upfits here and we're still working through the kinks. So we apologize. Colleen has fully videoed the meeting. You can get the full blown, all the comments on our website or City TV 3. So I apologize for that. And that's it there.
Okay, do we need a closed session tonight?
One other question I forgot.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Manager, could you give us an update on the Stanley White Project and what's going on with FEMA?
Yes, sir. So as we've discussed for months and months and months, we have been in the environmental assessment phase. That assessment was turned into FEMA. They have come back with us on a continual basis asking us to give updates. They've asked us for another update as recently as last Friday. However, last week FEMA also reached out and said they're ready to schedule a public input meeting. So the date we discussed was July 29th, Thursday night. We discussed being at the Omega Center, which is what FEMA requested at 7:00 PM. However, FEMA has not confirmed that date. We have confirmed with that the Omega Center is available, so the ball's in FEMA's court. We're waiting to hear from them.